Working on our Halloween event and so we're looking for local vendors. The past couple of years, we've done a trunk retreat, added that to the Halloween event, which I think the local vendors have really liked because it's a good way to showcase them and then meet some of the people in the borough as well. And certainly the kids and the parents that are walking around have enjoyed the free tchotchkes or candy and chips and stuff like that, too. So that works out well. That's coming up. And I asked at our meeting last week what they, what the team with the group wanted me to bring up, any complaints, any issues, any thoughts, any wishes or whatever. And they all said nothing. I mean, we just are very much a cohesive group. We really enjoy working with each other and Zach's a great leader. We just, we actually have fun following around and doing all this together. So that's pretty much my, that's the update.
Yeah, it certainly seems, you know, that's a lot of action. This work really is a great job.
You're always looking for ideas or if you have local vendors that you'd like us to talk to about a trunk or treat or festival or anything, think to pick up and let us know anytime.
November, you'll be able to.
Um, well, for the trunk or treat, it's really just anybody in Franklin Park. So we've had Howard, Hannah, um, Sorboles, um, a daycare, I think, right? Or, um, we run a pharmacy. So why? Primrose is the name of the, yeah. So just all of us, we're just kind of trying to be neighborly with our neighborhood.
Any questions?
All the time. I've met most people, I think.
You met Zach, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I just wonder, maybe it's more for Zach question of our general. I seem like I, I, I have a couple of natives. So I go, I get around a little bit, parks with the younger things, those green and sun. And, um, you know, we just went over and had a really nice program celebrating the times at the amphitheater. They put a brand new amphitheater there, but for really, really full. And they're, they're doing like summer concerts, like I think it was like five nights out of seven. Like when we only opened the middle of, middle of July or middle of June, it hadn't been over.
Amphitheaters?
It was like the middle of June. Granddaughter was over there. She did a nice sing sing program. And it was really full. They, they just, it was a hot Sunday evening, like 90 degrees. A little bit warm would be watching it, but it was, uh, the kids in that program really had fun. And I'm just, I don't know, they, over there, they, I'm not pitching for fine time trip, but my daughter, she lives up near Butler, so it just so happens her programs were there. But they have, we, they have that water park over there. They had some pretty, pretty neat things that, you know, I'm not suggesting, we don't really have a lot of money to improve the parks rapidly, but I think there is something to continue to some of the surrounding communities are doing that. Should we ever win the lottery or something, maybe a few of those things could be, um, programs we could consider either additions, but probably additions to the current parks.
Well, I did play the Powerball. And, um, fingers crossed, but also I like the summer concert idea. Where do you think that would be a good place? Just in the football field?
Yeah. I don't know how it would work out, but, um, they were having like, like, um, I think it was like the amateur bands or a guitar player would come in for, I mean, I don't know that they were paying anybody. I know my grand, my daughter pays for the program for my granddaughter to be in, so that they just happened to do it on a Sunday night. And they have about, they have about 25 girls in there.
Did it recite all from things they think?
Yeah, it was, it was sort of like, um, they, they brought in things that the kids had done that, that year and they put on like a concert, you know? I think they were, they, they were doing a lot of like, my granddaughter is only some, but they were singing respect, you know?
Yeah.
R E S.
Yeah.
And she was with two girls that were like 12 years old and she was seven. And it really, they, they choreographed it. So it was really cute. She would, she would poke in between them and do the, you know, it was just some interesting things. But there's, it wasn't just the parents that were there. It was like community members were sitting there watching it. They have like a bench seating they put in there of the block walls and grass and they don't, it's not really chairs. You can sit on the little walls, but you can also bring your own chairs, which is what we did. But anyway, I, I just think that it seems like we, we have a lot of great things going on at the parks and, and Zach, in the summer, I mean, with all the rec programs, probably no more time to, to think about anything else. But it just seemed like if there could be some programs that did some, some ways to encourage things that didn't require a lot of expense to implement them, like, you know, I don't think they, I don't even know if Sing Sing had to pay to use that, but, but it's just, there's really not much to it. It's a big shell they put up and it's really nicely done. But I don't know, it just seemed like if there's going forward, if there was like facilities that could be used for things like that.
Yeah.
I'm only, I have a pretty narrow window of what I get to see my grandkids sort of at this point. But you'd like some of the stuff that Pine has done with their little parks.
Yeah.
Goes from one road to the other. If you drive through there, one stuff. Might just be something for Lindbrook if we ever got water down, I mean, good water supply down there and put some little facility and so there could be more, more ongoing activities.
Yeah.
Seems like we have a lot of fields or activity and, you know, my kids played soccer in Lindbrook, you know, 20, 30 years ago. So Lindbrook's down the soccer fields and that's a long, long time. But maybe there's other things we can do to continue to get the community out into our parks more often than they come out now. And I don't, I don't know what those things might be, but kind of look around and see whether neighboring communities are doing.
Yeah.
Hey, Tom, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just missed the first part of that. So what is the activity that you, that you're talking to?
We were just talking, we were just getting the rec report.
Yes, of course. Hi, Rachel.
And, and just talking about is there are things that we could be adding to what the community could use our parks for.
Sure.
I'm not necessarily saying we need to spend more money to put programs on, but maybe we have some facilities where the community can go and put their own, do their own things. And I was just saying, my, my granddaughter had a concert over at Pine and they just put an amphitheater in this year. It's a small amphitheater now. That's not even as round as this room and it, you know, it's got maybe 20 feet high though, but it's all made out of like the wooden dome, like a half of a shell. And, uh, it, it's pretty nice and Pine didn't have to do anything. They just let them use the facility. In fact, they don't even have electricity down there. They had to bring their own generator to run the microphone. So, um, you know, maybe a plug to plug in their, their own speaker system. So there wasn't really any pot and time involvement in the thing. It was just here, you can use this building and do your, do your things. And then they have a schedule there. There was like different people putting on just miniature little concerts. That might be a guitar player and a, and a drum, a drum player or something. Did a two hour thing one night or a small little local, but I don't think they're paying any of these groups. These groups are just coming on just to get some exposure.
Zach, how often did we do that? We did, you talked about that.
Uh, we had some in the gazebo. Um, usually it was about once a month. Um, I will also tell you that the, when the Blueberry plan was done in 12, 14? Somewhere in there.
It was a while ago.
I was gonna say like 2012, 2014, when they did the master plan for Blueberry Park, an amphitheater was proposed, a small splash pad was proposed. Those were all things that were done and proposed years ago. Um, and there are also things that will probably be brought up when we do the new, the cop and rec open space plan, but, um, as to where we may want to put them and, um, things like that. But yeah, it's, amphitheaters are nice. They're not too expensive. They're quite easy. It's, uh, Blueberry's always been, a parking nightmare has always been Blueberries this year. Um, so because of everything that's going on. But that's what we're going to do the cop plan for is can we find a different area, a different park to explore in something like an amphitheater? Obviously you, you don't need running water. It'd be nice to have bathrooms, but, um, at the end of the day, it doesn't take a lot of utilities to run something like that. So like I said, we can, if that's something that we and the community believe we should have, whenever we start that, we can make that a, a priority to look for space for something of that nature. Um, even, you know, across the street as a health neighbor, property, um, that may be something, you know, become kind of away from the craziness of the park, the bigger parks and stuff. But yeah, it's certainly, like I said, something that will probably be explored further, uh, once we start that plan.
Yeah, something that doesn't, doesn't require a lot of expenditures for up to operate. Like this, they, Pine wasn't even there the night. They just had a, they just, I guess, signed up for this amphitheater. I don't think they paid for it, but I'm not sure of that. And they were allowed.
I can find out all that detail.
Yeah.
Of how they, and then how they manage it, how they.
Yeah, I, I thought it was cute. It was well done. And I looked and I saw that there was something the next night and the next night. In fact, I think they were on from like four to six and I think somebody else was coming on from seven to nine. It was a Sunday night. So I thought, well, you know, something cute like that and the community comes out and I'm, in, in the case of Sing Sing, they were inviting their own students to be there. And of course the parents and all that are there. So they got quite a few people for that, but I think a lot of the things were just a local little, uh, group just putting something on and, and the, the Pine had it on their, uh, community website and all that. Come on out, see this group, see that group playing. And it wasn't professional groups, you know, just like what we'd see in the nightclub, uh, you know, just a guitar and a drummer or something, though, doing little things like that, small, little things. But I haven't gone back to see any of them, but I thought that, uh, the facility was pretty nice over there. And again, it was brand new. So any, any, any way just to get the community or anybody into the parts more often, I've not had them sitting empty. Uh, not that they sit empty a lot, but sometimes you drive through Blueberry and there's nothing done with that. I'm not saying we have to put a program on, but if we could get others just to commit it off or something. More, more, more thought has to go into it, but it just popped in there.
Like that idea. I'm sure Noteworthy would like that idea if they could showcase their students, you know, right on Nippon and, I know pretty much our entire neighborhood goes there. Yeah.
Thank you. I didn't mean to take so much time.
Good idea.
Yeah. Anything else? Anyone?
The movies in the park, I'm trying to, I get a little bit late. Did you talk about movies in the park at all?
Did we talk about?
Yeah.
No, because Rec Board doesn't have, doesn't do that.
Movies in a park, we did that.
Mm-hmm.
In your opinion, so, or?
I, they're fine. Um, your return on them is low.
It's expensive to put on.
It's like $500 for a licensed fee.
Right.
And then your typical crowd is 30 to 40 people.
Right.
Um, so, you know, it's not, again, not a huge expense, but how much of the community are you engaging? Very, like, low. Again, if we want to do it, we can do it. It, it's not a, uh, it's not a problem.
That's what I was trying to remember. There's somewhat of an expense and we wouldn't get good participation with.
Movies were better than concerts, but that may have changed. I know Ohio Township now does them, I think every week almost. Which, which one movies? Uh, no, uh, bands and musical acts. Uh, Ohio does like one or two movies. Everybody pretty much does movies randomly throughout the summer at this point. Um, so it was years ago, Ramp, which is part of the group, which is the Rec Alliance for all of Northern Region. Um, they used to share the movie equipment. So they used to rotate basically every week or two to the different northern communities. As our northern communities have grown, we essentially all have our own equipment at this point. So we all put them on as we want. Um, and we don't have to be planned out like it used to be because we used to have to transport giant screens and, you know, technology has been very good to us in the last 10 years as far as movie equipment. Um, like our screen is a giant inflatable screen, which weighs all of 15 pounds to load around. The old one was these like six foot suitcases that probably weighed 150 pounds. So yeah, it's come a long way, um, which has led to less coordination in that aspect for the northern region.
Yeah, you rate, when you said that, it raised one thing that we did a couple of years ago. Um, the library, the Swickley Library would put a story time thing on the Ohio Township Park. We would take our granddaughter there when she was like three. It was like once a week. It was a weekday because of, you know, they figure the kids are not in school yet, but it was in the summer as well. But they would, it was a one hour program and you just, you signed up to the Swickley Library, but they used that little Ron Rotunda building they have by the field there, you know, as you pull into the Pine, uh, the Ohio Township Park. And it was, uh, it was nice. It was like eight weeks in a row and you could show, and they would have somebody from the library that would dress up, maybe with, uh, you know, uh, some sort of, not a costume, but some, some like, dress up like a Disney person or something, you know, and, and read that story and get the kids to participate. So I don't know if Northland Library would be interested in, you know, doing something like that in the summer.
They used to do some stuff. I know they moved a lot, especially after clearly they moved a lot of their programming onsite. Um, they built outdoor area at the library.
They probably could do it there.
That's what they handled a lot in-house now that they used to partner outside. Doesn't mean we can't ask them.
This would have been a good summer for it because they've been under construction. Oh, Captain Mrs. Close.
What kinds of things like that we pop in them or head you put out, but we just have to why they don't have to even make anything.
Hey, any other questions for Rachel?
I just want to say, Rachel, so many things are so wonderful about Franklin Park and the recreation that we do and the entertainment and the things we do for residents. You're so much a part of that in your committee. Just, just thank you.
Thank you. We enjoy it. We appreciate our borough and everything that you guys all do. So we, we all work well together.
You do.
Thank you.
Something else? Thank you so much for coming up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. So next we have Brian Hall, our diesel. You are up. Thank you.
Oh, wow. A lot of pressure.
And we'll give you the mic.
Um, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, just here to, to talk, uh, talk through the results of the audit for 12, 31, 24. Um, the, um, we have to file a form with the D C D, other than if you got, got a letter that they sent out of, letter, there's a letter to everyone about bottoming by March 31st. And the letter kind of read like everyone who got it didn't. So I keep calling that you filed. Um, so that's the initial audit you have to file with, uh, with D C D. And then in addition to that, we do a full set of financial statements that, uh, that we issue that has, uh, same numbers, just in more, uh, GAAP presentation, which is generally accepted accounting principles. So, um, I think we put, I, did Chelsea send over a slide?
Everyone had them in there.
Oh, great. Okay. Perfect. Um, I'm right here. Yeah, yeah, I think I do. I think I, uh, so I'm just going to go through a highlight. Always say, you know, um, the audit really, whenever you have this meeting, we're always looking in the past. At, at this point, you know, you're well into this year. Um, so we're always kind of working in the past with the audit. So I'll look at some required communications here, um, then just some highlights and happy to take any questions and ones away here. Um, our responsibility under general accepted auditing standards. So we do your audit, uh, we follow the general accepted auditing standards. That tells us what we need to do, uh, to issue the opinion. Really the financial statements are the responsibility of the boroughs and numbers, everything. Uh, at the end of the day, we just put our opinion on the financial statements. Uh, during the year, you did have to adopt a new accounting standard, uh, given all local governments on compensated absences. Uh, it, it doesn't change anything about, uh, how you operate internally. The compensated absences would be sick time or vacation time. It just tweaked it a little bit. Um, in most cases it bumped the liability up a little bit, but in the end it really didn't do too much. But you did adopt that. Uh, one thing you always point to in your financial statements, you'll see there's a net pension liability and a lot of information on the pension funds. Um, we always point to that being an estimate. The actuary does a report. We get the numbers from that report. Um, you know, they use all their tables and everything, but at the end of the day, it's a really long-term liability, uh, and it is an estimate to what, what that net pension liability is. Um, and the last thing in the required communication is just good cooperation from, from management and staff. Um, always, always happy to, to, to come here and, and work with everyone here. So everyone's very pleasant and good. Um, some financial highlights, and once again, these are kind of in the past, but uh, de- decrease in net position, long-term view of 1.4 million. So, uh, to explain it super briefly, you have your books as you keep them internally. That's how you file with the D C D each year. As part of your financial statements, they basically take that and convert it to a business basis that full accrual puts all your long-term assets and all your long-term liabilities on. Uh, so the only place that really exists is yearly in your financial statements. So there was a decrease there in the, in that, in that position or the equivalent of fund balance of 1.4 million year over year. Uh, some of that really across the board and we've seen it across all of the local governments who work with it, the, the spend down and the remainder of the ARPA money really was a lot of that. Um, the other, in the fund balance, so as you budget and look at normally the decrease in the governmental fund balance of 1.5 million. So it kind of ties in with that. Uh, really a lot of that is, is the capital spending that occurred, uh, during the year that drove that down. Uh, I kind of took a look back of it as I was sitting there to, to 2020. Um, we always look kind of what percent of your fund balance as a percentage of your bud budget. The borough is still in what we call the, the normal place, if you will, but it is down a little bit over in that, kind of that capital. You can see that me looking from, from outside, see the capital draw down a little bit, uh, taking that fund balance down. So that's really what you're seeing there. Um, long-term debt outstanding about 3 million and then that net pension liability, meaning here's what the assets are and then here's what the actuary says you will owe it on a long-term basis. It's a deficit of 1.2 million, but, um, really the funded percentage is consistent. Yet the, because of the laws in P A, they don't really allow that. In most cases outside of the city seem to have trouble, but those, uh, local governments, the pensions are funded pretty well. Um, because back to, oh, fine. Um, here I'm, slide five. Uh, just once again, ending fund balance at the end of the year, um, under modified accrual was 6.1 million last year and then down to 4 and a half million. And, and then in addition to that, um, you do have the, the golf course, which is a business type fund. Uh, it has equity of about 650,000 at the end of the year. That's all the financial highlights. I will say, um, important thing, you know, is your auditors were here way after the facts of what you don't want us to come in and say, hey, we had a bunch of adjustments because then, you know, you're working with those numbers throughout the year. Uh, so we continue not to have any significant adjustments as part of our process. Um, because we have little adjustments and everything, but nothing material at all. So, uh, happy to report that. Uh, the rest of the slides here, the next one, I just touch on a little bit, what is an audit? Um, when we come in, we just really look at a sample of transaction. We pick X number of disbursements, X number of payroll transaction, uh, really to look at your controls you have over those. And then similarly on the asset liability side, we look at, when you accrued payroll, we look at the payroll at the end of the year. We send bank and investment confirmations, uh, to really confirm those balances. We use analytical procedures, a lot of questions of why did this change year over year? Uh, it used to be, it would vary mild winter was a common explanation either way, depending on how the weather went. But anymore it's kind of always a mild winter for the most part. So, uh, that, that, that used to be our number one, uh, number one thing that was the, the answer to all our variance question. Um, we do all that there really at the end of the day to express an opinion on the financial state. So just to summarize that, um, the reports we issue, you do like, as I mentioned, you file with the D C D. So we issue an unmodified opinion on that report. And then in addition to that, your, these regular, normal looking financial statements, that also is an unmodified opinion, which is the best type of opinion we can issue as your auditor is saying. Uh, we, we were able to perform enough work and the numbers and disclosures were accurate, um, to give that unmodified. That's really it. Uh, thanks. Like I said, thanks to your team for everything. Always good, good to work with them. Happy to take any questions.
Do you, uh, do you auditor for any other municipalities in this region? If you are, you know, if you have fiscal's plan, but I just break apart here.
Um, so, yeah, we do, I mean, all our firm does is government nonprofit audit. So, uh, I, what I would say is from a, and it's been this like this forever through different, different management, uh, there has always been good internal controls here as far as the processes and people approving and looking at everything like that. So that's one thing. If you get to some of the smaller municipalities, say along 65, they'll have three people in the office. You have to worry a little bit more about who's cutting checks, who's taking receipts and everything like that. Um, so that's, that's always been the case has been there's been good controls here. I, I think consistent, like whenever I look at your financials, what I'm seeing pretty much across the board is the spend down of the ARPA money and then a little bit of, oh, there's not like a big excess here or anything. Um, and not that the, anyone's in, in the Franklin Parks or the McCandless or the Fran, Ross places like that, very, you know, very stable in nature as far as just things kind of go along pretty, pretty well. But, um, there is a little bit, I'd say of a downturn financially across the board where that, the percentage of like your budget and fund balance for a lot of places, I saw that getting up above, say if your budget was 12 million, you'd have 6 million in unrestrictive fund balance. I saw a place with six, eight million, like closer to 50 or 70%. The past year, that's much more come down to maybe 30, 50% kind of where in, that's what we're looking here. Franklin Park seems to be similar there with the, um, I, I mean, that's, I think that's everyone's challenge going forward.
Any other conclusions to borrow from you in terms of?
That's a good point. We do not, uh, within our documents here, uh, there are six, five, five reports we issue. We do have a management letter we sometimes issue that are, that's where if there are any improvements in internal control, we look at things like who can make wire transfers to things like that, some automated control bank controls. That's where we point to those things. We did, we do not have a management letter to issue, um, where we have any comments that we felt the need to have written. Good questions. Sorry.
Any questions? Maybe else?
Uh, I, I think, uh, just like I said, thanks to your team. It's always a pleasure. Uh, more, more for the people in my team to get to work with, with everyone here.
Of course. And, and just confirm, uh, we are filed with D C D. So this.
Oh, that's the letter. You have the letter. Okay.
Yeah, I can do.
Yes. Yeah, that last paragraph is kind of written like.
Yeah. You know, it's a very first municipality will be flag, you know, your D C D funding will be approved until all its, but, and we do have confirmation that's, we can like go online and see if they're.
Yeah, we, we, we have filing receipt.
Okay.
But yeah, there was something a year ago, there was something like, uh, I want to talk to D C D over 200 municipalities that weren't filed. Uh, so I mean, it was a pretty, it used to be there was like old local tools funding, right? Years ago, and they still want, yeah, they really don't do anything anymore. So I don't know if this is part of. Yeah.
We should watch it.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't even really call anymore. They definitely don't go. Maybe.
My previous community, we changed auditors last minute. Honestly, we missed our deadline. Got pushed close to the end of the year's discussion. Honestly, by March 31st of next year, they are the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mentioned some, I, I'm not very sure where the flags.
Yeah, we, we do, we do the training of a local, local government academy.
Yeah.
And the, when we talk about for this presentation, what should you ask your auditor about or what should we worry about? The main thing is just is the audit getting done and when's it getting done? Because if your audit's not getting done until 12 months after your end, you filed on time and then this is, this is kind of the normal timeframe for the secondary audit to, to complete. But I mean, it is kind of true whenever we have places that we haven't finalized their audit yet, that in and of itself is kind of a sign of, of That in and of itself is kind of a sign of of how things may be your function.
Well, thank you, appreciate it, but. Hey, um, next up. We have our chief.
Good, how are you? Thanks for hearing me. So usually I'm not allowed to talk home, so. Uh, I want to talk about the construction project for the interstate connector out at nine ten. And I'm going to start with the backstory first, while while I'm here. In the early two thousands, then fire chief, Rennie Clark, I believe he was also mayor at the time. And assistant chief, Don Merriman, who was public works superintendent. Came to the borough manager and requested, uh, for the fire company to have preemptive traffic. Signals installed on traffic lights at Nicholson Road, seventy-nine southbound exit. Seventy-nine northbound exit and Brant School Road traffic light. And it was met with opposition at first, but after having back and forth. And police chief, Don Dorsh endorsing it, they found a way to fund it and have it put in. It was the least expensive system that we chose at the time. And I'll get into the technology of what's what's out there. It worked most of the time, and we always had to go through the borough manager and say it's not working. And he said, well, I'll call it and put it in, would hear from them, would hear from them, would hear from them, phone up. Rocket, come the lights aren't working, I'll only check it out, working as it's not, well, they weren't. So flash forward ahead to. Read, read, read manager, whenever they redid the traffic lights, upgraded them to uh LED. So when that project went in. And we can borrow upgraded to LED, they had put new controllers in. Mister Parks, who was uh on council. Came and said, gone in the work order for them to open it back up. So when the lights updated, they were not reconnecting. So we have no easy way to get through the intersection. As it stands right now. And I do not believe one was put on the Brant School Road at Sorbo's when that light was put. So I'm coming since. That intersection would be completely up, that somebody from the borough needs to work with Penn dot. And when they redo those lights, put preemptive devices for emergency vehicles. It not only helps us out, it helps police, it helps the events.
I think, I think all the ones on Brant School and, you know, below on the lower end, they're all, there's not going to be ramps coming in at that time.
No, but there's still going to be a Brant School, there's still going to be a Brant School lights, but. There's only going to be one intersection, they're a control, it'll control both north and south, both. Both ramps will be, yep, what do you mean by preemptive devices are, when when the emergency vehicle pulls out? It'll switch the light to 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 breathe automatically, and as the chief will test. If you pull out on two, nine, ten, and Franklin Park, our lights don't change, the Domingo Road changes. Marshals, Domingo Road, I can, I can go through Nicholson Road turn on, my siren will be on what they call whale. Our lights, even when our lights were supposed to be working, maybe one would work. Like Domingo Road, three quarters a mile away was already flashing, it's turning green to be the.
So I believe the one further down where Wexford Run across, I believe they have.
They have it there too, to get the Wexford Run.
Right, I come out that one a lot to do.
And it, it's a, it's a device on top of the thing, is that? So if you take a look at the the thing, the traffic light arm, there's something that's on. That's, and how does it happen, the noise or is it?
Well, there's, there's several different technologies, ones we have are called acoustic. And what it does, it's it's a basically an acoustic sensor or microphone, it's up there. And it it'll sense the tweets or the whale from the siren. That I'm coming Nicholson Road or whichever way I'm coming, when it picks up on that, there's a white light up there, it starts flashing. And it's, it's activating the traffic lights in the other diverging lanes. But when I come there, I have a green light, the other three are red. When I turn on nine, ten, that new intersection, which is going to be a bear to get through. If we have it there, it'll, it'll trigger that light. That all the diverging lanes have red lights except the way the fire truck or my command vehicle or our ladder truck or whatever's coming. The same way down at Brant School Road, we would need it there to get through Brant School. And we do those straight ahead on nine, ten, a lot to get out of the Wexford Run, because we have, we have coverage out there. The acoustic is the most economical, because the only equipment you have to have is on the traffic lights. Nothing in the vehicles, you already have with your siren. Now, they make several other technologies, one's called line of sight. All the vehicles have to have an emitter. To get the sensor at the traffic light. So, and those, those emitters range anywhere from, depending on. The manufacturing, like from two hundred and thirty dollars to four hundred. Now, the technology for the light, the traffic light, there's negligible difference in cost, just adds equipment. To your vehicle, so all our fire trucks would have to have an emitter, all the police cars would have to have an emitter. And if the ambulance authority, but they have an emitter, so that would be a lot more than expect.
Your car too.
The other, the other technology is uh what's called localized radio system, they put it basically, they put a radio transmitter. And again, we have to buy equipment for all the vehicles, it broadcasts in nine hundred megahertz band. And picks it, picks up when you're coming, the same way it changes the lights. And most, most recent technology is a global positioning system. Again, you'd have to have some kind of G P S system for each vehicle for it to trigger that. So, we're asking that Jack or Gary that works for Penn dot to see if. When they upgrade that. To put the acoustical preemptive devices on. And I'm assuming the traffic light at Nicholson Road is going to be updated, since they are affecting that intersection somewhat. That they put it there and Brant School Road. And if the borough looks at putting it at the one on Brant School at Sorbo's. Like I say, it it benefits all three emergencies, all responders.
If there's a police vehicle from a gathered area. Yeah, so it's a, it created a bit, not as a particular part.
Right.
No, what type, what type does Marshall use for their, do they use?
Yeah, because they pick up on our siren quickly.
I was going to say, it might be good to stick with that, because I know you have the substation there that would come up that way quite often, but you're right. Interfacings with Marshall all through that area.
Yeah.
They have the same technology and they're very.
Yeah, Marshall and Pine put all acoustic in.
Did they, did they reconfigure the Brant School light and did green light go or not, I'm trying to remember. You don't remember reaching?
I don't remember, but uh, you think it's probably not. I don't, I've done a.
I I don't, I don't remember that on change.
Because we have. Figured they just started the project, you know, we're looking at about twenty twenty-seven completion. You know, maybe negotiate with Penn dot. And I brought it to, I, I had to make contact with the project engineer, the park company never got any. Correspondence about the project. And I called the project engineer, I looked it up on Penn dot, and he was real nice, and I mentioned something, he says, you'll put your municipality. To come to the Penn dot proper champs. Yeah, just to request it. And there is, there is a uh, emergency response meeting. Uh, that I was invited to on September twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth. First responders and municipal schools.
The previous ones were acoustic also, right? Do you have any sense as to why those aren't wa- working properly?
No.
That would make you die away from the same system again?
No, actually, because I think, I think it would have to be a better system, I believe. And I don't like to throw anybody under the bus, and I think funding for it came out of Don Merriman's budget at Public Works. He had to pick what was put up, and if there was one here, there was this much, and it was better, it was graded, more sensitive. There's one down here, there was less sensitive, but it cost half the time picking this one. You understand what I'm saying?
Got it, all right, and but you would, if you had your druthers, you would pick the acoustic again?
Yeah, because I don't want to, I don't want to have to buy a bunch of of equipment to put in our trucks.
But cost aside, which I realize cost is never a side, isn't that the one you would choose?
It's also, it's also uniform with Marshall.
It seems like the simplest, the most cost-effective, the easiest answer, but. Just wanting to make sure there's not something.
It's adaptive, because you've got all the emergency vehicles, whether or not they came from your place or some other place, they don't have to have special equipment.
No, they all have to, a high time shift comes over to get on.
Possible needs are just disconnected.
Yeah, you can see the one at the southbound ramp, the wires hanging.
Uh, it wa- I don't think it was working correctly.
When you look at it, it actually looks like a camera, people thought it was a camera, my wife thought it was a camera, they're taking our picture every time we go through here, and it's not. I had to show her where the camera was up on the other pole, I said, there's the camera that there that Penn dot has. But it 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 looks like a camera, and the sensor is built in that, but when when it senses it, tells the box. To change the light, there's also a stroke, not a stroke light, but a, it's an incandescent light that starts flashing. And when it changes the light, it comes on steady. But then that traffic going that way has a green button and all the other three are red lights.
Yeah, well, it makes sense to be, if they're disconnected, so at least tell Penn dot. Is this thing, please take that?
Well, they're probably going to put all new tra- they're probably going to be putting all new traffic signals in here.
Yeah, that might be two years from now, right?
Yeah, I mean, we've been doing this now for four plus, five plus years, I mean, I'd rather do stuff. Yeah, be satisfied with it.
Don't understand, but we have idle equipment in this working. And that's one to get back again.
Even in, even in the, all events, it's just going to be switched out again, we still have a year and a half, it's two years, so we were adaptive running right before.
Yeah. All time, but, okay.
But like I say, when I, when I wasn't, when we find out it wasn't working, we contacted, uh. Mister Rocket, okay, I'll go look into it, like I said, we wouldn't hear from him, I'd have to call back, and I was only a captain at the time, and. Then rejected, it's operating as design, which we knew it wasn't. And I, I don't like arguing with people in in this position.
Well, Bill, with Penn dot would have to install that, wouldn't they?
If there was a whole new traffic light system in, yeah, they would have to.
At least two, I think.
Right, because the, the, I I got off seventy-nine southbound today at the exit. And where the standard is for the traffic lights right now, it's all marked, that that pole's coming out of there, it's holding a traffic light. And one on the other side's coming out, you know, they're, they're going to put temporary traffic lights in. They're going, they're going to drill holes and put poles in and string the, string the lights between the poles temporarily.
So can't be any worse than the way it operates now, if you come from the, come from the Lord, get off the back, it's terrible to make.
Well, you know, if if you, you've looked at the plans and looked at them real good, the flyover ramp coming northbound. Is going to be two lanes all the way from seventy-nine, all the way up almost to nine, ten, and then split the three lanes. And then vice versa, coming southbound is going to be the same way, it's going to be. Two full lanes coming off, there'll be a dedicated right turn lane onto nine, ten, and then two lanes turning on nine, ten south. So it's. It it's a big job. Scott Merriman told me that, that he knows who got, they're they're hauling. Takes sixty. Sixty thousand cubic yards of dirt in to build this ramp. He said, that's a lot, so I said, it's not a lot, he said, that's a lot.
I I kind of wish they would have been able to maintain that third, that lane that you come off two seventy-nine and merge in. There's, there's two lanes, one of them ends there, and that, that lane could have been maintained in some, I mean. It's it's less of a concern now that, because you don't have a right exit to get off there, but. It was all, all seen unusual to me that they, when they did two seventy-nine, they didn't continue that lane all the way up. And making an exit only in Francisville, but.
Don't you remember when two seventy-nine first opened, it it went down to one lane. Prior to the merge, and there was only one lane that merged on seventy-nine, and they changed it to to add in the right lane. And then that one, like you say, the one lane end, but we go about quarter mile, and you've got to get over. Now, I don't know how that new flyover ramp will affect that, because it's not too far up there, it's, you're going to have to get off to go over the flyoff, flyover ramp. To get off. But we thought this was a good time to get the, this traffic light, and square the way.
I I I think you're right, man, I don't know too many Penn dot engineers anymore, I used to know a whole bunch of them, but. Would seem like, Zach, maybe that's something we want to approach Penn dot, just say, hey, as you're. As you're finalizing the design of these signals, this is going to be an important component for public safety. And I'm sure they've done it before, um. But I I believe it'll have to be, and it's going to have to be wired into the controller and programmed into the logic of the lights.
Yep.
So I mean, whether or not we put the device on or not, the issue is, they have to have the circuits in that to take that signal, do something with it. So there's going to be work on their end regardless of who buys them.
Right.
Yeah, we should, we should let them know that this is an existing. Device, right?
Well, I I definitely exist.
It wasn't open before, it's.
Yeah, but I mean, it is a process.
Yeah. I know, I know when I'm one, when I go to that safety meeting, um, or. Have a question and answer, like, like even, when they had another project that went over, I can't remember. We asked back then. Buy another turn turnaround seventy-nine, remember they gave us that one. Below two seventy-nine, blue. Me, me and Jason bossed along and give us that turnaround, unfortunately, we had some pile drivers from Penn dot, hey, we need that turnaround too. You're going to have to put it there for us and the first responders. So me and Jason and and Scott Merriman were looking, the way that's laid out, I'm going to ask for another turnaround. Directly across from that flyoff ramp for the board fund, when you think about it. Ramp now's. Little over a quarter mile long, and there's been accidents right at the, right at the entrance to that ramp. And we've gone down the wrong way to get to the accidents, now you're talking about a ramp that's going to be a mile and a tenth, I believe it's it. And trying to fight traffic to get on here, otherwise we'll have to go all the way down to the split, turn around, come back. And if somebody's hurt, trapped, you know, if we have another turnaround right there, all of our Penn dot turnaround. Emergency vehicles could access it, so I'm going to ask about that if it's.
Let us know, we need to measure for sure.
Um, the only other, the only other thing I have is. September twentieth is our firefighter for a day. It's us, Ohio Township. In the more island and Big Silly Creek. And it's at the main station. And uh, we're gonna have. Different stations for people to do stuff. They're gonna be able to bunker gear up, SCBA up, see how, go through a maze. Learn how, how we extricate people from vehicles. Use a hose, have fire, have a fire extinguisher training, and whatnot, see if it's for some recruitment. Uh, we, we've held it now. And prior to that, we had firefighter for night. Uh, before we built our new building, uh, we, we actually owned the house next to the fire station. And it was empty for two years. We actually did firefighter, firefighter for night in there. Smoked it up, have people geared up, just go with those line. Operate the rescue tools and stuff. And we, back then, we got some members out of it. Since we, since we've been doing the new one, we haven't got, or we got one member out of it, uh, but our neighboring companies have been there, are back members. So, uh, Bill Miller, our vice president, uh. Sets it up along with Captain, uh, or Captain Roger Sackler. He, he sets up all the stations and. We're open, we already got three, three registered. See what happens, see if we can get some members out of it. Uh, we're, we're doing pretty good number wise. Um, we're having a reading on a new, new member for a young, young girl that's. I believe she's eighteen, she's enlisted in the Air National Guard. She won't be born until January or February, she said. Uh, she'll be, she'll be brought up for membership here. She's been attending training nights. She's, she's really interested. But one, one good, we haven't had any bad incidences this year. But our numbers, our numbers are up there ahead of, ahead of actually here. So nothing, nothing real bad.
Any questions for the chief?
Okay, thanks for listening to me.
Okay. You too. Okay, uh, next up on this old business. Back there, how would I?
No, you're talking.
Yeah, that's what, that's my guess. Yeah, they're on. There, here you go.
How is our approach problem?
Alright.
Young. Uh, yes, with, back to the, uh, Burnfield Drive, easement encroachment agreement, we had some, uh, correspondence post, uh, meeting. The resident wanted the camera, the storm sewer line, just to see what its condition was. Damn, Gary was on vacation. Um, we said, we don't see a need for that, we don't see damage, but if you want to, we'll give you permission, you can go in and, and check it out. They wanted to know what size the bike was, and so we didn't have, uh, answers right there. Um, but, so we had some back and forth just with respect to that. Uh, then I proposed, uh, and been thinking about some of our discussions and, and now sort of we have split votes, we do. Counsel, so no, I don't wanna do it. Yes, we could do it. I got concerns, sort of like that mix around. So I'm trying to think of some, and I talked to. Uday after the meeting a bit, and, and he had an idea of, of a similar situation, relatives in Connecticut. First to Kastanow, I've heard of that, but then make, yeah, I, we'd be, we'd look into it a little bit, but then thinking some more. And the concept was that, you know, buyer or seller would put up essentially a bond. Uh, that if we needed to do something to remove this more substantial encroachment as opposed to a fence. Yeah, we already come in and pull through a fence real quick, uh, think obstruction here, uh, more substantial obstruction would. You know, still require the property owner, if there needs to be removal to do it first, but if they don't. You know, easement, uh, encroachment agreement gives the borough the right to do it and essentially pursue, you know, a cost of that, so. Concept was, well, they should put up some money that we can hold as a security in case we ever need to do that in perpetuity. Um, and I was thinking, well, do we have anything similar? And I remembered, oh, yes, we have more. Serving on, uh, lot sewage treatment facilities. Uh, we have a requirement, if somebody's gonna do that. They put up a bond first and foremost for the total cost of the installation. Then when it's up and running, that number is cut in half or. Hold some of that money long term for O and M, still on the responsibility of the, uh, operator, the owner. And if we ever need to do any work, we can use those funds around time, be doing it, maybe not, of all of that. So I. Wrote an email to, uh, closing attorneys or proposing and saying that's what my, my concept was, and that's my ideas. And didn't have a number, I'm not sure, we'd sort of have to think internally, what makes sense? Is it five thousand dollars? It just sits there. We get the interest, it's ten thousand, you know, or along those lines. Um, so I didn't get a, a response, I got a phone call, and I just played phone tag with the attorney, then I'll be back a, a second time. So I have not formalized that, but at least they've been given an email that said, no way, that procedure for them. So, still have that possibility. But no, with our quick discussion, uh, in pre-meeting, and this sort of being sprung on everybody, we have had, uh. Two weeks, if anybody had additional questions or concerns or other concepts to bring into this. Uh, I'm not sure if we could, within the last month, I brought my paper copy of the, uh, sketch, the survey. With the fence, I understand, post, um, meeting, the current property owner. Wars. Uh, yeah, had raised a concern about the fence, that that wasn't their ass, that's not something we wanted, that was what, yeah. Gave rise to the revelation that the fire pet patio or dining wall were in need. Drain easement and on top of the line, at least in two points, according to the survey. And that they wanted to do something, you know, separate, they wanted to take care of their issue as the current homeowner, let the new homeowner. Worry about the fence and everything else. So that would conceivably be two separate easement encroachment agreements. Doesn't make a ton of sense to me, impossibility, but in way that we. Had somewhat envisioned it, that this would capture any encroachments, uh, we signed. According to ti- uh, timing and way we had it set up before, as the current property owner, think they're closing yet. But yeah, we're, we're, we're doing two separate agreements, more than two, that's all in one, one ash bomb. I don't know, Tim, or Gary, or Sean, I don't even have been too involved, but any types of off the cuff. Numbers that we could think of that would be, uh, an appropriate bond if we ever needed to go in and. Jackhammer up, or what would we do to, to. The emergency.
I don't think there's a lot of expense to that, if we're just having to remove it, because like I said before, slabs of grade are typical. So, um, you know, you always have them, and it's, and the question, this is a, probably a fire ring that's. Three and a half foot diameter that they close to service gas line. No problem additionally picked that out, um. I, I just. Well, um, I don't think that's causing any issues to the thing, and I don't, I don't think anybody has brought that to it, because it's, the, the purpose for that is fine. Um, the purpose for that is to put.
Yeah, seems like the current arms didn't care. Do you know a lot of them doing it there?
A lot, the, 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 the buyer doesn't, doesn't care. The fact that it needs to go, you know, they learned upon before they really didn't. So, um. The, the other thing, just your application today, I got notice from, I've never seen this before from MTSA, that. They've approved, um, a, uh, a background swimming pool in there recently. Which was not shocking, so, uh, everybody's due.
Yeah, yeah, I, that, that kind of brings me to where, to where I am. I think we need a universal plan for this. Uh, because it's a popular plan for, but the issue over on, uh.
Where somebody builds something, then says, oops, I'm guilty where I should have.
Right. And then, and then are we gonna allow them? I mean. I don't, I don't like any of those.
I know it was your last time, but I just think it's a bad festival. It's really bad for them to, to, to beg for forgiveness without asking for permission. Over and over. I, I don't know if you want to pattern that, but.
Or, or if we do, if we use, if we use mass, max solution, I mean, you know, we have to apply the. Uh, including, what's that stinking name that's, or, or the trees?
Oh, that's a right away, that's a bit different than these ones that are. Essentially private property, but has the easement running through it. More water or.
I would have a standard approach, we, we would have never allowed this if they'd asked for a permit for it, so we just kind of.
Take them out.
That's kind of how we.
I mean, it's, that's, I thought that was like, oh, I thought you brought that up, right?
That's what I say. I was somewhat okay, I was somewhere in between.
I'm, I'm a big no-huh, I don't like this at all.
Absolutely, mass.
The other thing to keep, the other thing to keep in mind with this too, is that if, um. Here, Phil's face, uh, those, those easements are personal. I mean, they're right there, and they're in places where it's. Really does hinder the expansion of. And to no fault of, of the buyer, so.
But they bought it with the easement, bought it on the robbery, when they knew what they were.
They're not gonna understand why they can't. I have, I have probably three or four situations over there where, where just. Pulling their hair out because there's no place for them to put their bets. We can't even say thumbs up, thumbs down to that, because there are no reasons for it. So, uh, stormwater easements, sanitary easements everywhere.
Are they where they are just because of the way that?
The way the plan was designed.
It was built out and approved that way, like, if you, somebody said, this is a good idea, I'm gonna approve this, and this is what.
Well, this is where it works, okay? This is where it follows, and goes right through the middle of the backyard. Or real close to, real close to their houses, or there's nothing to put a house, but there's no room for that. Seen that with a few of their plans, but here, Phil, seems to be really bad to that. Seems like almost every property around. Was the law so small, difficult as the surrounding business?
I mean, we have quite a few of these, as we said, but do you know how many of them are active with that?
You mean construction?
Uh, the people are wanting easement over, usually, they, and you said, they have these agreements in place already.
I don't, uh, I don't know, we don't have any.
Before they do the.
Yes, yeah. But most of the things in the past that we dealt with is always sanitary, so. I have meant that, that usually gets put on the sanitary authority, and they do grant that certain things, obviously.
Right, that busy stuff. And we, I was trying, I mean, we drew this up because it has come up, and it, it is usually an application coming in, getting. Done it. And I can only remember. The, uh, the one emergency secondary access, uh, but they never even signed, they either got approved, but they didn't wanna do it. Put in a fence within a gap, you know, where the access to that stormwater. Could be used, so being that done, that much, I'll let it trade in the form, we can have, have them out there. What a solution, if one is, is authorizing the encroachment subject to terms, including allowing us to remove it at any time, perhaps putting up the bond. Uh, that would be something new here. In terms of sort of policy, that we, we sort of have one now, Tim's sort of the gatekeeper first and foremost, but then when somebody has done it and seeking. Given us rather than permission, a little bit of unusual scenario, it's case by case, really.
That came in today, the big thing you have to deal with is the gas line and the fire.
Actually, I would. No, because the, the, like I said, they're, they're not, they're not very deep. Um, they're specifically a thread line. From this, like typically, typically they're on the, uh. Line after the meter before they leave, this has been a house, and it's usually shut up there. Get fire that, so you wouldn't have to, under the house to start it, or you shut up exterior and shut it off. It, and it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a main line, it's just a domestic line. You know, probably flexible for exterior use.
Yeah, so like, if there's no easement or anything else, a clean backyard or anything else, they came forward, met setbacks. And again, given to, we'll do, give a building permit for. An addition, not murder the main.
Well, for, for someone, this is the, it was a. That is not regulated. Even with the gas, it's not regulated, indeed.
Just, just wanna add the, uh, thing that Matt's brought up about the bonding. For the example that I talked to Matt about, uh, it's in a, I understand it's in a, in another state. Uh, they basically have a underground pool, and there is a little house or, or we call it a control. Yeah, okay, so, uh, which is like not decode, uh, so it's a condition of closing, uh, the township or the town. Basically metallic bond, uh, or escrow, which the homeowner will get back upon for mediating or removing or whatever it is. So in this case, it's possible that an option would be the homeowner gets this bond or escrow back if they're, if they really do this. Uh, that, that's one situation, that's one I have.
That was not an issue that I had, but it, there's no one ever said you could back.
Exactly.
I guess that is.
Having to be carried stick of first here, uh. They don't do it immediately, but yet they still have to put something up so that borough is not at the focus.
And a, a lot of the deterrent, people, do they just move forward?
Exactly. I'm assuming they have not closed.
No, I have not burned it, and I've been pushing it off last.
Yeah, they're not closing until just. The other thing too is, I, I don't, you know, for just the removal of that facility in that area. I think fifteen hundred bucks would be worth it, because all you're doing is borrow a machine, scoop it up and dump it out.
Yeah, it's just, it's also his favors, probably, or whatever.
Yeah, so you're only talking an area of this twenty four wide by whatever the, whatever the area is. Typically, that's not going to be any territory, so twenty by thirty area is the most considered, and I think the both.
And, and my only concern with doing two small numbers is that it could be in place for twenty years, who knows? We don't want them to have to every year redo it, do a developer, do a ten percent come out, so something that captures that. Last interest to go. Or Chris, I guess.
Never had this issue. I just may don't remove anything that was in my right way. Uh, excuse me, it was an act, actual utilities, sewage wise. It was, you know, if I have an emergency, I'm removing any, my third, so, uh, this is a little different stormwater, so. Uh, maybe less already based, but still, uh, I think it's important to keep our infrastructure. And we're already seeing the same issue on Montgomery Road, where people's gas put lines over our infrastructure. Now we have complications with time to work. Uh, and so just opening yourself up for complications in the future.
What kind of maintenance does that stormwater facility need to have on, do we know? I mean. Even if they're in this part, it may not be what we want to.
It's just a pipe, so there's really not, I mean, doubtful we need to get them there in place, because it's. Partly not metal, it's probably plastic.
But I mean, I'm chance we have to. Yeah, if you make it to a little number, say, if. Yeah, if you make it to a little number, say, if.
He was just by your way out doing.
I feel like it needs to be a long term number. Looking at some of those and something like that.
We're talking about just the fire pit, you think?
Take the, take the wall down.
I don't know if you, have you seen the pictures of your?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's really bizarre.
I think that they have trampolines there or something.
Yeah, it's, it's just an area, a level out of area for.
It's just a small cutout area that has, it's actually probably a wooden wall that.
And honestly, what they're probably gonna do is take the wood out, bring the material there and just. Break the sharp edges off it, which isn't gonna be, it's not gonna help us either way. You know, that wall is, it will probably be removed by, by the people that are applying the house post. It's not what it should be. They're not planning on it. So, the, the issue with bringing material and putting in our, our easement is basically you make that pipe deeper. So. Who's, who's to know what the original grade was?
Have you said before that if they were to come to us to put a patio in, that that would have been approved of flat surface?
Because it's a slab of gray, yeah, lava waves, swamp waves.
Yeah, and the only thing that changed was then the secondary use of the fire pit, right?
Fire pit, this is separate.
That's why I should definitely be, that's. Should be a one, but you're saying it's not that hard to remove it at the. A month.
One on fifteen hundred times one. And it's time to get out, so we get a jackhammer or something, new materials.
There won't be any jackhammer without, that's a bit shitless. There's no, that, that's not concrete, that's just.
No, no, I mean, this type of. Scenario, not the borough code issue, not the. Still, otherwise, it's just like the expression of. Municipalities that.
And it's gonna be us that they're doing, and so our cost is like. And to, I think, very kind of best case. You know, it's probably a little more considerably more than our cost actually.
Couple, couple scoops and things, you know, then.
Yeah.
What, what if you made it where like five thousand dollars and anything, or non expenses goes back to the rent and people?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, if you do that, um. So, you know, if they remove, and you probably, as we're thinking of this, we might wanna portion it, um. As if they do take out the retaining wall and we say it's five thousand, do they get a hundred back for that, um? And yes, they can earn it back by removing, um, more, yeah, we. That my only pay, just because we'd be using found material, we won't be hiring a contractor, that'd be easy to find, uh, uh, an invoice that says what we paid. Leave that open, we will also need, I mean, access here, she's gonna fence it off, uh. You know, typically. Well, that's the only thing that.
How would you handle the fence and just. They came in, no other issues.
Well, that's what I've thought of it, so.
No, what I'm saying, they came in, just wanted the fence. But it still needs, but I don't need to.
And it's, they ever reported furnace issues?
No, if they ca- if they came in today.
When he was, Paul Max or.
And that's what we did, we told, we told Max, Max was gonna do it, he was, Max was taking care of all the paperwork and then Doris and Pete to them. For doing, for, for his. And signed over on the agreement, and, you know, that's, that's, we would allow the fence to be ruined.
The one like last month where they made him take out a twenty year old fence, why is that different? It's a different utility, is it a different arrangement?
Yeah, one that it comes with the sidewalk?
Yeah, I don't know, no, there was one, they've been sitting there forever and they figured it out because somebody else had a fence that was screwed up, and when Tim went over there, there was this.
Oh, that wasn't an I right away, that was MTS A's.
Okay, but we made him take it out.
That was in, that was in the road right away, and it was additionally over top of an MTS A slip. I mean, it was, I think it was put in a man.
That was the new one that they put in without asking?
Yeah.
But wasn't there also an existing?
Well, no, we, we issued a permit and that's where they.
They put it in the wrong place, but you also had a neighbor next door that had a fence or something.
And he left there when he found out that that was, I'm not sure, he was talking about.
Right. Put it out.
Just, did Luke can answer your question?
Well, and then the road right away is a, a different, a different thing, but, but an actual easement to somebody's son in the yard, because that, that's a travel. Three year.
They're reviewing on this, or, or we. Which, which direction are we going in? Are, are we going with the bonding and then?
I like the bond if we're gonna do this, and I agree with Max, we have to include that, include that retaining wall, even if it's just wood and it's easy to take out, as long as it's there. It needs to be included as part of the bond. That's true.
Right now, there's, is there, is it, it's wood?
Yeah, it's wood, it's, it's just, yeah, it's old, old wood, you know, them see the woods. If I had it, if I was buying that house, it'd be the first thing I would. It hits and it's, it's not very nice, it's just an old one.
Well, we need some sort of agreement that that's coming out.
And, and what's the bond that, um, that's part of the pain for reach? This is another problem I'm sitting there. With the interest. Yeah, that's, it wouldn't be. We, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be opening separate checking accounts for reach, that's where we just link them together and.
Have they been hit the five thousand back? If they were with the fire pit. Fire pit that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's for, depends if it's going in, I mean, that, that, I'm assuming it's gonna stay in, that's on. Thousand bucks for, uh, rather than trying to do a reclaim. Thousand bucks for the retaining wall, thousand bucks for the fence, three thousand for the fire pit.
Well, if we're gonna do this, and we're gonna handle these moving forward, we probably need to have some sort of. Standardized way to figure out the amount, I know there's gonna be some speculation in it, but right now we're just grabbing at random numbers, I think, and. If we're gonna have this process in place. Specifically in my mind to deter people from doing these and coming to ask for forgiveness. We need to be thoughtful about how we're coming up with this dollar amount, instead of just guessing what it might take, and, because you may be holding on to this for thirty years.
For more.
Uh, I'm, we care to, necessarily, just a deterrent.
Let me suggest one other thing, maybe this is the, the right way to approach it, but let's say we feel that all those encroachment stuff is. It would take five grand worth of work. Why don't we get, why don't we get the bond for five thousand, give them ninety days to do it? And then return the bond, if they can close on it, if they don't. We, we, we cash them on, I don't know, just trying to figure out a way, I, I don't wanna create something we're gonna be. Managing in perpetuity, fifteen, twenty years down the road, or, or about that far for. If you want it, the, the things that, can't we just have them remove the things that are objectionable? Railroad tie wall, the fire pit. And the fence, just take it out, you have ninety days to do it, we have a bond, they give it, give us a bond now, they can close on it.
Well, the fence isn't in yet, so the only ones, wants the, the, the buyer wants to put the fence in.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Fence is the deal, or if they can't put a fence in there.
I think they wanna, I understand that they wanna keep the fire pit, and maybe the answer is just that.
They're, they're not unhappy with the fire pit, but they're, they're, they care less about it, they're all, they're all.
Is, is the fence something that would be permitted during the run?
You wouldn't prevent that.
Encroachment agreement that we've brought, we're just fences. Because, uh. Get to it, as long as they're not poking the hole through the pipe. Not. An overly substantial structure on top of it.
So you do a lot of that.
With an. That doesn't have a bond, it just says, we can knock it down if we want to, if we need to.
What, or is it?
Okay.
That's your reason, you tell me.
Okay. Doesn't sound like we allow this in general at a burden, with an encroachment. That's. Yeah, her, but not for the fire pit, like, right, so.
Well, first thing, Tim, slap it great.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we wouldn't do a agreement or anything like that.
It's a slippery slope, cause it really is.
Is there, is there any, if, if you, they come in and there's some difference to it, is there any utility we say no, can't?
Or slap it great enough.
No, the fence, no.
Or fence, I would say, you need to get authorization for, for whoever.
But there's, there's no.
As a matter of fact.
There's a gas line, you're not gonna say no.
Right, as a matter of fact, we have, we have a situation down the road from that, that the, the storm source private. Easement is owned by Alden almost six, I think there's twelve or sixteen people that own it. We're making the lady get signatures with everybody on the agreement, saying that, that they're okay with it, because they're, they have to maintain it, we don't. So, you know, they can't just approach onto that without. He's also, it's passive, I think, so.
I, I did a one question, I, I never saw the fire pit in there, it just, doesn't the chapter ninety four not be required to keep fire pits for this twenty five feet on? A property line?
No, that, that, it has to be twenty five foot from, from lasting structures. Except that, the setback stills.
How do we feel? About going this long route? Ninety days, or everything?
Well, we thought they would give us ninety days, and I, I believe the owner probably, I'm deep asking for, for the bond that they made us. You know, get rid of that.
You're suggesting five thousand dollar bond, ninety days. You can have the bond back within the nine days, otherwise we cash the bond.
I mean, it seems ludicrous to maintain that for twenty, thirty, thirty years down the road, start of.
You're right, it is, it's such a administrative headache for somebody to sit there and watch that monument, their interest or whatever, and. Even trying to remember what it's for and.
Well, the en- the interest, the interest. Is into the general account, and the other one is not a problem, because it's just sitting there. So, you know, I, I can tell you that Granberry, when I was there, they loved these because that was.
What's the interest in being on a bond for, like, five thousand dollar bonds per year?
Well, if you have a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Well, you're not gonna have a five hundred.
Well, let me tell you that, dear folks, I mean, you never know.
Yeah, I think that's something to keep in mind. I understand everyone got surveys, everyone knows it's there. But legal notice and practical notice are two very different things.
Or contract, and so apparently this one's set up, you're good to go, don't even need to.
Right, right.
Or a grading ring and then.
Okay, so let's encourage that kind of behavior.
Only reason I think we should even have a bond, is because they wanna close on the property. And so if we're gonna answer that, I would say you have ninety days for working.
Dig it out and.
Well, they can close in the property without, without our, that's not holding up the, the laws. The buyer doesn't, you know, or in a position where they're stuck. There's violations from the people.
When you're saying five thousand dollars, whatever the amount is, and they have ninety days to hear it, and if they don't, then that is no longer a bond, it's just the borough's money, it's a fee they pay. To keep that, and then we have the, the easement agreement in place, where if we still need to ever remove it. We're gonna remove it and they're still on the hook for the cost.
Whatever's over the five thousand.
No, not whatever's over the five thousand.
The five thousand's just a forfeit, I guess.
Right, well, that's. That would be whatever.
Yeah, it works, I just don't wanna.
I don't know, and if you can do whatever you can, I mean, this is an agreement between two parties or so, but. That does sound a little more like a. Fine or paying, and I know they, they asked, hey, can we just pay the fine? You know, for this encroachment here and be done with it, or something, no, that's per day fine to get you to come into the client, five hundred bucks and. Okay. So, I mean, I, I know it is administrative headache, but something that ties it into what would be used for. Essentially, holding the borough out at no harm, that, you know, rather than having to do that. You know, if we ever needed to, and go after them, if we misbehave, if I don't lean against the property, then I'll pay it. Gets us in a better position, if you have money, then so much there's paid, uh.
Which one is more administratively cumbersome, holding out to the bond in perpetuity, or having to go after people?
Having to go after. Well, I mean, tough, I mean, you got violent and it's questioning, collecting. Even if you file a lien, it sets.
If you're sending people to magistrate courts, like. The prison court.
That's an enforcement. Yeah, we say. Yeah.
It's tough, but none of us want to do any freedom of which of how the bond.
I think that's fair.
That's fair, at least we have that.
We can set up on the little high, like the full ten thousand.
Yeah.
Why, why not go, go higher, just like the two? Make owner just maybe not, I mean.
This is the best outcome to have them remove it.
But yeah, the, the purpose of doing that, they just make it, make the owner just, you know, go ahead and do whatever, you know.
For the benefits and burdens, do you really wanna pay this, or do I just wanna get this out?
And she wants the fence, so that's the.
Yeah, in my case, though, it's not necessarily the person to. Put this in, who the burden is gonna be on. Because, because of transactions that.
Um, I, initially, I like Tom's ninety day, I'd give it, but that's. This is kind of friendly township to have, because. Especially if Bruce says that we're set up, we should be sure to pay them to leave there, so they collect interest. And we're looking at, at a lot more of these potentially come from. Either that or we're just like, no.
I think it's a pretty good legal cost on all this, that I'm sure is, you know, put the, you know, put these with the grills, other nonsense is running up the bill that they need to pay. Before we even talk about.
The, this guest that I used to put in, and we set up different. Matter numbers or, or set, uh, step up.
As a precursor to.
And it could be, they could just say, don't.
We don't care, we're not even doing this and force us, uh. He'll pass through because she. On the market, I don't think it was an enforcement.
Thirty five thousand dollars rescue.
Maybe.
Well, yeah, she's off, she's off the bench, so.
Okay, so. Bond route.
We want to, we want us to do some crunching, we figure out a reasonable number, seven, thousands, five thousand, ten thousand.
And, and you, we did pair it with something.
Now, when I, when I was talking to the bonds, I was talking to cash funds in general, I'm not sure if they want, and I'm not sure this is something that they want.
I can tell you the five thousand dollar bond usually costs a hundred dollars to be. Cause I've bought them a lot in my cases.
Yeah, but most of those cash bonds, the, the, the.
We would be.
It's not a sure.
It's, it's a bond that we're, that's in the bank, this, on the mouth, it's in the bank that we're getting.
Yeah, I, I mean, to go, to go is like compel them to do this.
So they're in the deposit money, we're gonna earn interest on it.
Yeah.
And I know that that's fine for them. Yeah, MTS A doesn't take any bonds or anything, they just have an agreement on, as long as they have that agreement, they're fine with wiping out what they want. Well, they're gonna say, yeah, and there's no law across the.
Right, what about the fence, I mean.
But why do we have to agree to a fence that we weren't able to agree to?
Well, I mean, Gary, I mean, Gary says, we have it, yes, and. Do the rings, and. I mean, I don't know, it's, it's not the restructuring that.
If, if you love a fence. Nothing else is there, you would allow this, but it, it agreed, right?
Wouldn't agree, yeah, but, but you would make the decision already on signing the agreement, so you. Or MTS A would, or the, you know.
I don't remember the last time.
Not too long ago.
I mean, we've had a couple that, that they've asked for, that that's why we had the four new agreement, but that they backed away.
Yeah, not too long ago, that's why they asked for it, they backed out.
Does MTS A usually grant these protections?
Yes.
He's right about this. Probably the least constructive thing they put there.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean. Not like we're, let's not go on the bond. Unless I go about that, but that's.
I was looking at the, I was looking at the bond as a mechanism. That you take the money to force them to make the corrections. We're talking about just holding in case they ever have. So, different thought process, process on what the bond is for.
They might want the five thousand dollars back. Right, and if they want it back, then they can resolve the situation.
Then we give them the bond back.
Yeah, you can buy that back.
Yeah, I was trying to be in the.
Or anything else that it costs us to do all.
Yeah, because we're also along with this, this successful, this hard issue, now, now we have to show. Which is the problem.
But I think Zach's right, I'm, I'm, I'm dealing with five thousand dollar escrow bond, it's not gonna, whatever they're catching up. And it's not a deterrent for the next people to come along to the exact.
Well, and, yeah, this, this evening, brochment agreement is recorded, it runs with the land, money there, they sell, somebody buying it's subject to that and.
Can you remember what was that, right?
Yep.
Do we have any personnel, we've had people that remove stuff like this, I mean, have we ever stuck to our guns and said, take this on? We always bend over backwards to do this, have conciliation.
There's only driveway. The sidewalk. They, they put it aside for eight and then it was asphalt and a special top or something.
Yeah, asphalt driveway and they were.
Yeah.
I hope they never change that.
That was up in. That's the, that's the one I can.
She's not in the past, already said precedent.
Yeah.
But there's precedent fencing, no precedent for. And the, the post request.
Okay, but. It's the bond, if it's five thousand dollars too low, if you wanted a good character approach. Uh, should be higher.
I think we have to walk the line and figure out what's a reasonable. And get on the pin and even from an engineer or somebody who, you know. But still have to pay.
Who's the bond from, the seller or the buyer?
That's their problem, that's definitely their problem.
It's gotta be from the seller at this point, this is the one.
At least, at least for the buyer, maybe the, the change.
So if we have to. And here's from now, we have to notify that seller, wherever they live.
No, that runs before, and they're, they're giving up on it.
Okay, so it's part of that. Make a fifty thousand, maybe they'll just say, we're gonna take out that fire pit that had ball on.
You wanna land the place after?
They, they, when they sell it, they should keep in mind, we have got. Five thousand dollars sitting out there, so you pay me right now for that step in the shoes.
This is something we don't know before.
Let, let's clear the pond and, and.
Well, you, you're gonna look into some figures.
Yeah, I guess we'll each one of the three, I can figure it out.
Well, I think insurance, what could happen, I mean, that's the other concern, this thing is a half on. I think we got steps. Or back at the.
At one point I said, oh, we'll pay the fund, and it's five hundred dollars a day to get them to comply and stuff.
No, I mean, it could be a foul, if it's a zoning permit violation, it could be.
Some kind of remediation of that as part of the bond. That's part of the cost, that's part of the cost of the, of what you're putting in, you're paying portion of the fines, part of the. As part of the negotiation, as part of the resolution of the problem. Instead of being made to take it out. Right, because if I understand correctly legally, you could do an enforcement where they have to pay five hundred dollars a day under the zone. Violation, you would, you don't have to play nice the way you're doing this. It is a resolution, it is a settlement of potential bond.
To some extent, we have not issued enforcement notice, they have rights appealed in zoning hearing board, Matt at the magistrate. Let me go to right now. But yes, I mean, in general. Enforcement actions or potential equitable actions, they get judged compelling.
And I gotta tell you, there's nothing in any of our codes that says you can't build an easement, it's just. Given. I will issue a go permanent easement, it'll be missed.
Why isn't it in the code?
Because it's an easement and, and.
Property law.
Yeah, um, it's just. It's the way it is, it's just the way that I won't issue a permit, they're, do it without a permit, then you're in violation of the, you have that permit, so. I wouldn't be, I, I wouldn't be pursuing that for them in the easement, I would be pursuing that if they didn't get a permit. Oh, by the way, I can't issue a permit.
That's gonna research. Yeah, if it was me. I would go twelve thousand because he said five hundred dollars a day is what it back something to action. Hey, that's not the standard that. I'd be able to find this, but.
That, that means there would be no incentive to do it and run around it, because you're gonna wind up coming pay the. Pay the fine, whether or not you try to do.
There is.
No, the end run is, I'm gonna build it and then ask for forgiveness, what I'm saying is there's now no incentive to, to do that. Because it's gonna cost you whether or not you. And maybe that makes the most sense.
Yeah, but I gotta tell you, nobody's, nobody's doing that like that, I mean, everybody's doing it. Because they didn't think it was a big deal, they have no idea. That's why if it's four thousand dollars, I will make them move.
Attention.
Get their attention, because thousand dollars.
Okay, that's not listening. Is everyone okay with that?
Well, I mean, yes. We have it lined up for, uh, you know, old business tabled on the seventeenth, that we. If you want, we're court back or keep it as.
Because they're in favor, we, we didn't cause this emergency, I don't think it should be Jenny overfattening.
Yeah, right, just in terms of.
I heard the last meeting, we wanted to investigate, think about what we're doing, be careful without understanding, that was, if we're not there yet, we're not there yet.
Yeah, I mean.
Work all the details out. That's what escrow is for.
I guess, it's, I mean, it's been tabled, so it's on agenda under old business, um. So, yeah, we could come back with a report that we've done the review and it's whatever X amount. The chair will, will have them completely agreed to it, but here is the filled in easement agreement with this wand concept. You know, that's not in there right now, here's the amount. Be ready to go. But yes, we can still have the opportunity to table at that time, consider some more, we'll sort of work toward having a number. There and have a discussion, you know, with. At least the closing council. What direction we're going in. Sour the deal. Don't even need this then.
Actually, oh, no, no. Yeah, remember, they can always pick the quotes, Doris, and the only. You know, the only thing we can do is literally. As violations and.
Start racking up the funds.
Because they don't pay what happens.
Right, so we're not gonna have a number to consider and discuss itself to be correct. So then you can't really present that to them.
Say, this is the number one thing.
We're not gonna have deliberations.
Just rather than take your, we wanna wait till we deliver.
If there's a.
Weekend.
Because half the, pick a number, uh, we do our little check and fill it in.
Yeah, I don't.
It makes perfect sense. Yeah, it makes perfect sense.
I mean, that's. Negotiating with their side, I mean, that's, at least it has a, a, a rationale to it.
Right.
Here's where it came from.
They can always say no, right?
Yeah.
Make sure clothes on top of this.
They can stick the money in an escrow if they think they're gonna have to pay it. Somebody has to pay it in some way, that's how escrow works.
They doing this so that they cure it at any time when they're holding it. They get the whole amount back?
That's whatever it costs us to deal with this.
No, but what if, no, they cure it themselves, we don't clear it out, they cleared out. They get the entire money back, entire amount back.
Yeah, if they're paying legal fees already.
They have to pay legal fees upfront if they're getting it.
Yeah, that would be a separate, they'd be paying the recording fee, it's going two hundred bucks to record this agreement, how much time? You know, fill it right now.
Yeah.
You know, phone calls, emails, just leading up to it.
Drafting that thing and negotiating.
We want them to pay that, yeah, it's part of our signature and then, you know, post, just twelve thousand.
So if they want the easement agreement, it's got something, or they will have the option to just clear it out before we can.
Yes.
I, I, I'm okay with that.
And they're always gonna have, like, even if they remove the two, she wants the fence, so it's gonna be some encroachment. In this easement.
And then having forward, that's probably, Lord, it's probably the right approach, which is whatever the max fine is. Yeah, I, I'm not gonna take twelve thousand. So you probably won't pick, you probably won't get a situation.
And you can, I mean, he could. Yes, I don't know what the topography is. He did across that.
This is gonna be on the process to organize this.
Perhaps, I think the problem is. Each one is somewhat unique and, you know, I don't know what, it is a pink ground pool. Bump ground pool, there's differences, I guess we need to do twelve thousand.
I don't think it will work because you're gonna, I mean, they're gonna.
Backyard.
For, that's what I like about.
It's like we're not thinking through all the angles yet.
They're gonna have to deal with this.
Yeah, probably.
So, and later we can make some changes, if, if not. But I, I don't know, I think that's, we can try that.
For this situation, yes, if we're saying this is our standard moving forward, I mean, I thought.
Maybe the next one that comes up, it just establishes a good.
All right.
Wait, we stopped the meeting.
Uh, yeah, sorry, a little bit late here, but it's discussion. So, now, can you give me the. And potentially this thing.
That's under old business.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There you go.
I just have a couple items for executives.
A bunch of seasons of bias. Send initial feedback from most of the farings today, um. So, I'm gonna step will be, uh, putting some numbers together and, uh. Writing into Zach so that he can sit down with the directors and, uh. Put together a gate line for a fast review, we can start again.
October four, the eight AM, guys, because that's what everybody likes. Brilliant.
Uh, the only thing I have is, um. We're, we're finishing up our favor, we have probably one more date, even to finish up the streets and get some back to them to do. Any other question I have, talking about the budget, we've got some budget, uh, speaking with Zach and that who is, uh. Looking to try to figure out names of the streets we want to put into the budget too, I'll review that on the page next year. But, uh, we're, we're gonna need to know, you know, how to spot on, you know, the dimmato. Uh, we got quite a few areas out there, quite a few streets, they. Eighty two paves and we're looking at the several blocks, trying to run, we're looking at the spring roots plan with. Montgomery Road and Montgomery Road, so we're gonna have to have something done to it after the structure is done and it leaves too. And so that's another, that road's up three quarters mile long, one end to the other, so.
I know we haven't done a road tour, maybe you should.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, plus, plus the, the, I had a talk that we had on, uh, the amount of people fighting about. Several blocks, and, you know, that's still, I'd be good idea at some point this coming to move forward again.
You know, you said like, it does oil and ship in, when, when did I hear that, or was that just?
Yeah, so. There was a rather invested test, maybe we should, you know, so baby general, uh, they did appreciate it. Yeah, so, is there, is there any way we can get, I know you said cost on like, paving or filed, like the breakdown.
Yeah, I can get, I can get my pounds on, on farm trips and roads.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great to have, um.
There's actually one that I've been thinking about for quite a few years, that would be a good candidate for it, would be, uh. Uh, the G road. The G road, you know, we did some patches on the G road, it's actually held up. Pretty good three years, gets, gets married and some holes and something to repairs, we gotta do, but that would, that would probably be good road for, that's, that's.
Comparatively less money than.
Yeah, I think, I think the one time, it's been a while back that I talked to the buyer, and I mean, I think you're, you're probably a model rich, but probably due to. I, I'm just taking a guess, I don't mind, I, I can give maybe some better numbers, probably maybe eighty thousand, one thousand dollars.
So you could really stretch the budget with that finish and.
If you, if you get, if you get a road with a good base, I mean, you know, like I said, the, uh, the G road is probably good. It's, it's held up pretty good, I mean, we did some area patching on it and, uh. You know, that, that would, would probably be a good road for it. Uh, the ones, some, some of the roads aren't gonna give you quite the good base and, you know, uh, and you want, you would definitely want a road that doesn't have curbs on it. You don't want it in, nothing into a house and a venue, you're gonna have nothing to compliance on that, the amount of materials can be laying around too.
That's actually the insurance plan, we get flames every year.
From this.
Or just from like the milling and the people getting flat tires, they have to order insurance, that's just for regular operations. Instead of throwing down a bunch of pebbles everywhere.
So that could, that could increase borough's costs.
Yeah.
There's already insurance, it's a bonus. Right now it's fine, it's still weather, but because of like car shooting everywhere. Uh, the number of things that they're left in, that'll be a hit to our premiums. Basically, you need. So it was.
Yeah.
Uh, so you mentioned three to five years is almost a tar chip.
Well, they they'll do it, they they do the tar chip type probably over three, three, five years. I'm not sure, I don't know, Sean, uh, do you guys ever deal with uh, busting on tar and chip and?
Yeah, so we have um. We have some communities with tar and chip in rural roads, the neighborhood residential roads. Tar and chip or residential neighborhood roads will pave it a year or maybe less than a year, yeah, we have a lot of people. Um, it's usually, uh, four boxes square yard, five box square yard for double seal, so.
Are they in the sport communities?
Some of them, yeah.
Ohio township does our, that's the only one. It's in our area.
Did they do tar time?
I tell you, I went to Rick Costco today, every road.
Was tar and chip, yeah.
Whatever.
Minga red, it's, yeah, Minga red, yeah, it's, it's our red.
Well, you cross it, you cross it over it uh, and through, I go to cut through Marshall and down by where the. Marshall municipal building, that's all tar and chip. I mean, I, the whole way out, I thought it was taking the back roads, that was every, every bunch of chip amount there.
Yeah, the other thing you have to be careful of is tar and chip often has a high failure. Um, the aggregate comes out from the. From the oil, split spots is redone sometimes, so it is a good tool for rural roads, but you have to understand. You know, its limitations, it's level of success. Um, it's not a replacement to where a real. It's a, it's a maintenance thing.
Overall, how do people accept it?
Um, again, in more densely populated areas, pitchforks. Rural areas, okay, we, we, we have furrow, pitchforks.
People fish with really nice cars.
Yeah.
What do you guys think?
Off a quiet.
We we defer, you and I can solve or defer to your council's opinion.
If you get like more.
Yeah, I'll get some more information on that, I'll uh, check.
They're still gonna have the data.
And that was the first time I'd ever heard anyone complain that Frankel Park is paid too much.
I've never heard that, but.
That was the first time.
Is it combined with the concrete?
Tar and chip, after a little bit of time, it does so.
Yeah, again, for for a rural application. I thought it does all over the place. It it, you know, you build on top of it year after year, you know, cycle after cycle. Um, there's a mess beginning, it's not all over, it's sweeping up. The road only one ten dot tar and chips it. Um, the community quit, if it was a, wasn't a state road, but.
Good to know, uh, then in a regular pay rate, it's last sixty years.
Yeah, it's gonna go anywhere from ten fifteen, it it depends on face. Face of the road, you get, you get an area with a bad base under and it just, some areas that the, the long, there's a lot of water underneath it. Some roads, you know, you're, you know, we've done roads that uh, do any bad for eight or ten years on it. And you had a very good beginning, but uh, yeah, I mean, the the base has been a whole gift and. I'll be on.
Our our previous payment program uh, tried to pay on fifteen year segment, so. We were, we needed to do around four point three miles a year for like our sixty five miles that we have. By order to stay consistent, uh, obviously, last two years we've been short and then the COVID year we were short, so we're already. Around uh, six point seven miles behind right now, um, so.
Gary, does the neighborhood, it's the builder, it's a builder that want, it's a piece.
Yes, yeah, make a pen down.
Gary, is the. The milling, how long is that on? Milling, um, our milling hasn't, wasn't, it wasn't a good season with milling. We had, uh, we we changed because of the bid process with the going through the bid process. Taking the cheapest bidder out there, uh, one we had this year, uh, is just not good for us, I mean. We had a mealy, mealy company, I'll tell you what, I've I've been around milling companies for years and uh, they were, they were probably the best that I've ever seen. I mean, for what they did, and then, you know, the guys who called them up, they were in their big job, uh, this company that's rights that we have now. Uh, I I mean, I'd like to see if we bid out again next year, that, you know, that if they're a little bit, you know, I don't know how you can get around. Possibly, you know, you know, but they were actually, there was actually three, uh, mealy was actually the third. Third one this past year, you know, that uh, we would add, take somebody else, but uh. I just saw, as I said, they were, they weren't good for.
I understand that, um. The milling. It would have been up to some good, and if it's not so good, we're adding a lot of time where we do. Right, correct?
Yes, it put us behind, um, slowed us down on our paving, uh, slowed us down a lot of stuff. And we ran, we, I mean, we ran, we ran into quite a few different issues this year too, because even some of the plant, the asphalt plant burnt down. Uh, things like that too, but the milling did back us up, we started out, uh. We start on ten hour days at the uh, first of May. And that's when we try to start getting the milling and I, I set the stuff up with them, we didn't get, they didn't know our first roads until almost the end of July. So I mean, we just, in this, you know, and we only did half with two and a half, two point seven six miles for sure, so. If we would, if we would have had the four and a half or five miles, I I don't even know who would have been able to. Whenever just slower, everything you did, everything you do, which is.
Is it the contractor?
Yeah, that's the other. There's something money to consider. Uh, so I don't know, is there? On biz of that, is there?
There's a way, I mean, you, you can have some pre qualification, uh. But by and large, it is tough to just go off of somebody, you can have a process, you have. Documentation of, you know, failure to perform, others, particularly from what you've done. You need to do that, but. Case, yeah, Brentwood and Borough, you know. And sewer bids or something, somebody that they were in litigation with, but just kind of threw them out. Oh, can't do that. Tell them search inquiry. Irresponsible, but.
Well, is it just this, this historical account of what happened?
I don't know, we have to dig into some more for that one or two little things, but. Systemic issues.
Starting to look like it sounds like a real issue to them. Oh, yeah, and you're supposed to be financially sound of your.
Yeah, so this is possible.
Yeah.
Gary, thanks.
This month, we have ones on hearing, um. Two hundred dollars.
Last one. We got bargain bait.
This is just the porch roof for front yard on which for front road. And then the planning commission doesn't have that, uh, applications for the night. But al- also, um, the uh. We, the sewage, sewage planning module was submitted. Um, by shuffler engineering for Eddie Holmes, uh, there's two lots that have been on recent road forever. They were part of a plan over there, they were never tied into or had access to the store. Line, so they they could not, just because they cannot get empty service. Eddie Holmes has, I guess, uh, talked to PSA. And since that area is failing system because it's. Obviously, this is failing system, there has to be a series facility. There has to be a sewage facility planning module done, so what they're planning on doing there is, um. Uh, enforcement. Two lots basically runs partway down. Not Pender Road. The borough right away. So. Would like to get that out to the intent that. For this month, so. Get a couple of houses and do more times.
And then take, I see there was a subdivision where they were kind of just go to the green space and Franklin Parish and the rest of it was.
Yeah, that that's just a minor subdivision and it it's technical of the Jordan State law that we have to sign on to because. We're sharing that lot, but so there's no development.
It's all green space, we don't get any tax.
Yeah, it's on, I'm gonna pick the whole ones.
The mansion.
Uh, you have my report, I know we talked a little bit earlier on some things. What will be anything else?
Uh, golf course, uh, August was with the lot, it was very successful with revenue. Probably had the most rounds we could play in a month, uh, we roll over six thousand rounds in a month. But in that case, the forces also beat up pretty well, uh, keys and trying to keep grass growing their life. We're doing well, I mean, I I personally, we're stories from other local forces, so we're, we're doing good, but we can definitely use the rain coming. Uh, in those kind of conditions, uh, still working with the siding. Um, there was some potential issues with behind the siding and attachment of the hardy board. We may have to ask the, um, for more funds. Uh, around doorways and windows. We should have that within a week or so, hopefully. Uh, what that number would be, uh, to get that job started and completed. There's a delay on the siding, so we're sixty, six weeks out on the siding, they they say. They say it is ordered. Um, we're looking to airify the greens late, late September, probably October, depending on weather and timing. Um, parks, the, um. I guess the, um. Other than my report, the, the, the roof. For the activity center and football. Uh, we're looking at maybe a possible pre-construction meeting on fifteenth to sixteenth. With that company to get that started and going. Then the only other thing I wanted to mention was with the memorial benches. Uh, you know, we have world program, we have, there's five benches at Old Orchard, we put in the last couple of years. One, one significant one out front here that was dedicated to order, one night out. And there was one, it's up in Pickleball, I talked to him heading into the trail. That one actually was Chris Hope, who was the stealer, his wife had passed away. And our friend put a memorial bench up there, it turned out very well, when, when the, when the park crew put that in. There is a nice, um, pine tree that's there, that it's like an angel tree, they're calling it. Uh, North Park has for people to bring frinkets, but if you put on that tree, we have a rock that there, it has a dedicated plaque for that tree. So if you're in the park in that area, take a look, it turned out well, the Hope family and the friends, you know. Very much appreciated what the park was done for that area, it's it's a nice looking, oh, the park. Robbed above, you're really, I grabbed, underneath the oak trees, it's kind of secluded. It was a nice little addition to the park there. And that's all I have.
Thank you, um. Yeah, you covered the clubhouse, um, other building stuff, so the, the roofs that were awarded a couple of weeks ago. Contracts being exchanged, we set up pre-construction meeting for a couple of something that we started. Rochester Road, um, Old Orchard Sidewalk. Discussion of the meeting a couple of weeks on that, we have resumed, um, so we picked up where we left off there, I saw there existed. This in commission to plan today, um, so we're moving forward now into permitting. The SOP, the single permit design. Um, so that one's moving again, like we talked about two weeks ago. I think only other update is Acorn Park, um, we talked in previous months about coordination with Conservation District B U P, so revised permit app. Revised permit went to them, we had completions commented, free minor completeness comments, those will be addressed this week. Um, they had asked us to apply for a GP, a general permit, the additional street crossing, that was the issue with the. So, um, finish the string with comments there. Permit revised, um, broke and finished their work there and then. We're actually just waiting for a pay request from the independent to close. Those are the updates, are the significance for this evening, unless there's questions of council. I have nothing to add to my report. That's it.
I brought backup, um, the sergeant and the station is here because on the seventeenth, I will not be able to attend the meeting. So I thought I'd bring him along so he can see the interventions, um, and have a walk. Lucky me. You have a, you have our report, um, any questions, I'll be more happy.
Thank you.
Um, you have my report, uh, the red part, not much has changed, I will touch on a few things that are new. Uh, the LSA grant, uh, Chief Leach got me his final pricing for the grant that I, uh, gonna pursue. For equipment for the police department, additionally, I'm gonna submit a secondary grant for the, uh, the playground equipment that we just submitted. Um, and have a, a large ticket item and small ticket item, uh, for the LSA grant, uh, Acorn Park. The bathrooms were supposed to be installed this week, uh, the delivery company has all of a sudden got cold feet. Is concerned about getting a crane on location, uh, and they want to do a site visit now to confirm that they can. Safely install the bathroom that they guaranteed they could. A new thing on the, the agenda was, uh, the Maggie Road property, the property we own across from Acorn Park. Uh, the North Allegheny Soccer Club has reached out to us, possibly, uh, spending, uh, some significant monies there to. Uh, upgrade that facility, uh, in order to run their organization out of, um, the email they sent to us. Uh, we're talking about a six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand dollar investment, um, we requested a formal letter of commitment from them. To confirm their, their interest and their desire to move forward, it's a bit of shopping for land in the area. If they bought properties that they couldn't develop for a handful of years.
They sold that to us. We bought that from them.
Yeah. No, uh, we'll, we'll see how far this goes, but, uh. Uh, they, they have too much money that they're holding, uh, they need to do something, that is from my understanding and that some, our conversations with them. We, um, applied and were accepted to the bird town, uh, through the Ogmont Society, the EAC, uh. Put all the, all the applications that we just got, uh, accepted this past, uh, couple of weeks. Um, they will, uh, do some sort of recognition ceremony with council at some point, uh, for all the environmental and green space preservation we've done. Uh, we had a recent complaint on a Reese Run Road regarding a crosswalk, um, so. Right at Lacoste Court and Farmington Court. Uh, residents reached out to myself and Dennis and asked us to meet them there about concerns around a, uh, a blind turn. Uh, and not having residential crossing there, I know we've talked about this issue, I believe it was in twenty twenty. Um, and so we, we identified some short term and long term, uh, problems that we could try to identify. Uh, in the meantime, working to get a tree removed from the right away to open up some, their lines of sight, uh, but the residents are very. Persistent on wanting, uh, a, a crosswalk installed in that area and following our comprehensive plan. Uh, to create connect connectivity in Old Orchard.
Uh, so if I could, um. Yeah, so we went up and we, uh, we, we went with the residents there and, um. There's definitely a, uh. Safety issue with there with the way they're walking through Reese Run. Um, um. To get to Hill Club. It's a very narrow path with a tree, uh, fucks everything, uh, we did a big portion of it, so that's. That's the tree we're talking about, we can just mention that perhaps we can headway with that. Um, but there is some, there is a definite, um, concern there with the way they're walking along Reese Run. Uh, to get to. Uh, to get to, uh, Hill Club to, uh, to get to the park. So it, uh, it is a concern. Uh, well, I I remember back in twenty twenty, this this. It took me a little while to get refreshed on it, but. In order to make it really one, to really make it really. The way it should be, there'd be a long sidewalk that would be involved long Reese Run beginning down at Hill Club. And I recall that home over there where that field, where that, where that, uh. Sidewalk would be needed. As long as. And that 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 I think, do you remember, remember this?
Yeah, yeah, we we went through it all before, they didn't even really want to remove, um. Most of the landscape that was in the way, if I remember correctly, they definitely didn't want the sidewalk that they would be responsible for.
I just wanna, I just wanna say that. There is a concern there as far as safety in the way to, in the way they're walking that narrow path. Uh, to get down, uh. To, uh, Hill Club, so whatever we can do to maybe make it better for them, that would be, uh. That's what we should do.
Well, what's some of the short term options?
Uh, removing tree, getting line of sights, if you actually say. Uh, the the long term, uh. It needs to be a sidewalk. It it is, in my opinion, significantly more unsafe than. The other site that we're looking at, but less impactful in the amount of residents.
Yeah, I think, I think that's true, I think a far, far. Small amount.
Yes.
Utilizes.
I think it's around twenty homes that. That benefit from this compared to the opposite side. But it's coming up blind turn and then it peaks and just. Add session.
Who are people walking?
So they're, they're crossing from Lacoste and going into the grass. And the private residential yard, they're paying us the right away. But there's a section where there's a tree that hangs out and they're going under the road around it. But they they use it so much that there's a dirt path going into the yards, so.
That right away is Reese Run Road, which is obviously safe.
Mm-hmm.
Is there, is there any? I remember looking at this years ago, we come out here club and look to the left, it kind of goes up the hill there.
Does and it's oak brown and.
It's all overgrown, I mean, is your. I don't know if there's any more distance on that right of, on that Reese Run right away that that could be. I'm not seeing a sidewalk in some way. I believe it comes pretty far uphill when you come out. When the left there.
So I'm looking at that be an option, uh. Yeah, oh, sorry, uh. Um, now it's gonna touch on the other now, if that's okay, yeah.
When they say the club will have exclusive rights, are we trying like exclusively exclusive?
They they're, I know, did not use the words.
But yeah. Our understanding is whenever they want to be able to use the field, they have. First day on field.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it would be much like our leases that, yeah.
We're still, it's still our field, it's our property, but they essentially are building fields for their usage.
So they would have right of.
Yeah, there's like a first right refused.
Yeah.
And really. What this is gonna do is allow us to kind of get them.
Yeah.
In the, in the fall there. Uh, and allow, obviously. Because the ultimate goal, I think, is like four fields. Over there, possibly even one that is turfed. Um, to give them more of land to use. Most of their fields are, um, McKinney. Um, Lindbrook, they have one full time field and they've been using the lacrosse fields in the, um, fall here. But that's. Again, not a permanent player chin and with. Irrigation the way it is, um, at Lindbrook not having any. Having those fields get trampled before the lacrosse and soccer, they're right now or might as well be intensive down there, they're just, they're, they're dirt. Uh, it's, it's not good to. When we don't have irrigation to put in the ground, it's not good to run those fields nine months out of year. So this allows them to have an area and to rotate their fields they have, because, I mean. We have it here in Lindbrook, McKinney Complex is the same way where their, the fields are just overused. Or the weather we're having, um, and so they're, they're suffering quality of play. Because they can't, they don't have enough fields to rotate through. To not be using them five, six, seven days a week.
So they do not have irrigation. Plus that, okay, and their life, I think it turns out before. Okay, I just don't think the term exclusive rights to the field.
Yeah.
Gives me pause, for sure.
No, it's still.
Just like it. Okay, that's fine.
Same as what baseball also has, what are current. Little crawls for the current soccer. Those are their fields, but they're still our property. Uh, and lacrosse did this.
And we generally told it to be there when they're.
Correct, lacrosse did in twenty ten. That time, right?
Okay.
Break it, no, that was different. Um, well, lacrosse basically. Paid off a loan to make those, the lacrosse field, um, for the large upper field. So it's, it's been done before. The difference being they are coming money in hand versus payback later, um. I don't know what baseball do with lighting property, they're coming. Forward as opposed to post.
You know that, you do that.
Yeah.
With Chris B. Tom.
Would they, would they cut the grass or do all the?
Still our park, yeah, so we still maintenance. And, you know. Whatever money obviously will be worked into a maintenance fee. Moving with them for. Yeah, everybody, association, father leases, they have a maintenance fee for their fields. But we do consider capital improvement and capital investment. To create essentially till. They'll pull our maintenance fees out of it.
If they invested a large sum like that, it would be a long time. They'd they'd pay us.
But we'd still have time and availability for us to. Rent it out that somebody else. In our organization, if they weren't gonna use them.
That's okay. That's a lot of kids.
Do we need, do we need any work, please?
Uh, I can move some of the ground. I don't know, no. Okay, sorry. Yes. Uh, I just, I, I. If you're a member of Mass here, uh, we asked those season, we got a ton of. No removal. Yeah, those are violations, we switched up the process. So we have a ticket now, we hang on the door, fifty dollars, seventy five dollars, hundred dollars. Pretty much that's everything. Uh. A bunch of other items that we could possibly use that on, we talked about expanding that perhaps. Uh, it'd be like your, uh. Your mowing. Or for your, uh. Trash can. Running out, so on so forth, but. Right now, it's costing us ten dollars and forty four cents. Sent a certified letter. For seventy four cents. Door, that door approach is twelve dollars, just been posted, it's one of my time going out there. So I'm wondering if we should have some tickets, however, we could be selling this cost from our N O Vs. Right up front, which is a, a base charge of twenty five dollars or some. Don't know if there's any interest in looking at that, I could get more specific for you or not. Don't, uh. Just wanna throw that out there where we're talking about how we're including some of that.
So you're already out there. Instead of sending out a letter, you say you're gonna post it.
Well, yeah, what normally happens where normal N O V, I, I, I look at it, I document it, I come back. Write the N O V. Send a certified letter, I send a U S mail letter.
And the snow.
And then in some cases, I still go close to the door.
Right, and the snow melts by then.
Well, no, we do for for the snow and ice because we have the ticket, you know, we have to take right away, and he's talking about doing it for other. Other things, Riley, and you leave your trash can out too long, because by the time I get through the N O V process, you put your trash out there. And that's, that was never really changed.
So I think you're arguing for efficiency as well.
And.
We call them our costs, yeah.
I don't know that it will work for all of them, but if there's interest in looking at that, we look at it, it'll let for a better recommendation.
So Max, if he writes a ticket, do they pay to the borough to avoid going down to the bathroom, he's ready to fly?
You know, they don't say it, then they still go.
Then they go see one.
And again.
What's the question?
Uh, trash can and. I bring mine in there. Well, no, it's, it's, I don't remember the exact times, but.
I think it's four P M.
That that's the word, yeah, if you have, if you have trash pick on Tuesday, you put it on Monday night. Okay, you have it, have it in Tuesday evening. Wednesday, your neighbor goes downstairs, you don't have it, usually Wednesday, sometimes during the day, I get his phone calls, so by Thursday, I'm out there to look at it, okay. So at that point. Friday gets it mailed. Monday, you're putting trash can out there. So this would be a much quicker, yeah, get on the door, not writing all these letters and sending certified, man.
Is there something has to be changed in our processes for that, Max, or is it just?
Yeah, uh, we've done.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we don't have blanket sort of ticketing ordinance, we've got property maintenance code, we've got zonal, criminal.
Where's the snow one falling?
That we have to.
Treat this like a snow one.
And we we amended the ordinance, A, to change some of the time period button to write in this ticketing process. Do either, I mean, we have the high grass weed, um. Ordinance standalone chapter, uh, part of property maintenance, but I think it's good. It is, uh, great, uh, but, you know, the solid waste. Is there regulation or part of your trash can?
Was there a way to, you can do that and some change, is there a mountain shift to make?
Yeah, so making a, a, change the violation process.
By whether the everybody is. It makes sense to me.
Uh, they're pursuing and putting together a list to get. Fortunately, we had to do it separately.
Get that, cause.
Uh, yes, but there's no public hearing.
Or for.
Yeah, you're in the two separate. Chapters and complexes even that I'm. General administrative section beginning. Chapter, we'll. Make it up. It was taken very due.
Obviously, from my.
Yeah, right.
And it's, um, evenings.
Yeah.
Then, uh, after, after you go.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. No, you're right.
No, no.
No.
Name my service.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, we got our M M O documentation today, um, our rates have gone up, uh. Significantly for the police. Um, pretty on par for our general. Um, our obligation for the police fund, uh, is four hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars, uh, two hundred and eighty seven cents. Uh, the general fund is three hundred and forty eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy four, um, so. For the police has an increase of a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars and for the general funds, an increase of thirty eight thousand. Our minimum obligation. Um, over. The last handful of years, uh, we deferred all portions of our investment gains in twenty three and twenty four under the four year asset smoothing method. Uh, to try to keep our numbers down, now we're gonna be paying to catch back up.
Sounds like a budget hit.
It is a budget hit, yes.
All right, that was the, that was the, uh, yeah, so.
And it's one that we can't get out.
Okay. So it definitely put a crunch on the budget, it's already a crunch.
Yes.
All right. Good to know.
Yeah. And, and if we're gonna get into pensions, we'll, uh, police pension, it's funded to ninety five percent, so we're in healthy range. The, uh, the general fund is at, uh, eighty percent, so not as healthy as it should be. So, um, long term, we should be investing even more into it to get us back up to put to that a hundred percent range, um. Right now, we're, we're subsidizing part of that payment to subsidization to, to match our expenses.
All needed to be dealt with during budget talks.
Yes. May well be. But I'm just letting you know, that's what, we are obligated to pay for M M O this year, um, it's already from science, maybe total capture. Yes. A lot about coming to this. Yeah.
One seventy eight percent.
Hey.
We did go up, yeah, we went up seventy eight to eighty, but. But I'll start it the whole.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, why stop the whole rule? So, uh, Laura, Tom, thanks for. Did last one, I know it was very, uh, very detailed and, uh, fresh. So, uh, I commend you guys doing that. Um. Yeah, I just want, I just, I had a chance to like talk to a few folks afterwards, uh, great, please stick around. Be random folks that I don't know, just ask some questions, like, what do you think, uh, any thoughts, questions, like, clarify. And then, you know, my person asked, like, where's the. Counts or boroughs have done this, whatnot. Um. So I kind of like went off the list, you had the PowerPoint deck, uh. You know, I mentioned pine, you know a little bit about pine, uh, after stopping to that, we actually went. And what are some details of Pines? Website and all the documentations are fishing around. Uh, you know, and they've had it connected to you, and, you know, one thing. Uh. I mean, it's ever come up in conversation here, but because of their additional revenue. Uh, they have some sort of homestead exemption for, it's your prior resident. Residents, um, so eight percent of homes in Pine do not pay, uh, local property tax. Uh, so every year, the council passes a resolution. Uh, and the resolution that takes the number, like, what is the standard deduction? Uh, so this past year, the standard deduction was like. Hundreds, fifty seven dollars or two, two hundred and fifty seven dollars, sorry. Uh, so of your property tax bill for Pine, two hundred and fifty seven dollars is offset. Uh. And I was trying to think of this because of school. This school is your tax bills due last Friday, uh, book. Sunday, whatever thirty first was, uh, and then there's a little line out of the box that says exemption amount, so the borough doesn't have that. Uh, but the county, the school has that, but that was one thing you need about client that I thought about, so. You know, they have a patient, I was talking to the resident, but somebody mentioned something. Uh. The other. The other item is, uh, I know they long, uh, both partners, uh. They'll be each other, uh. Two other individuals, Jason and another Jason, uh, they are all retired from municipal government. Uh, this is basically a nonprofit, uh, considering there's still a lot of members, uh, now we should re-up that.
That's not perfect.
Okay, uh, you know, we should re-up it, we get discounts, we also get free registration through topics, but, uh. Their consulting fees are a hundred and eight, hundred and eight dollars an hour. Uh, and basically, we had an hour and a half long discussion, uh. What have you guys done, uh, where have you done this, you know, how's it, let's work, what hasn't worked? Just in case it passes, uh. You know, they kind of mentioned that initially what would happen is. You know, if this were to pass, those seven members would kind of like get together fifteen days. Uh, it is self-directed, so this is not something where the boroughs, where's the then or anything. Uh, not aware of, but they're pretty much self-autonomous. Uh, and they get started meeting. As early as January, and they get determined what help they need or what, what help they do not need. Uh, they all seem, I haven't met all of them, but, you know, just looking at their files. Yeah, just talking to a few of them at night, they all seem very experienced. Like attorney, but accountant, uh, engineer. It seemed to be pretty self, self motivated, uh. But one thing that I want to mention is the first nine months is not when the bulk of the. Services come in, in terms of like their help. Usually they, it's the first nine months is usually the research period. But the second, the latter half is when the bulk of their effort would come in. Uh, so it's something they wanted to keep in mind, uh, and the effort could be just very much open. Uh, it's wherever. The municipality wants to. You know, go for, kind of like our city state where we go in stages, so if we want to authorize X and O for this, we could do that. Because no set limit or set floor. Um, and then. They also made a comment that, uh. They like to, they're not looking to work a lot. So. Since they are hourly and retired, they do want to keep this very light, uh, and from what they know about our community, they do feel that. We're not like Wilkinsburg or Braddock, which has a lot of research, um, they do work for Newcastle, you just wrap that up and that was. Quite extensive from what they told me, but. There, those communities were pretty bad shape, so. Anyways, thought you should know about that, you know, did you do that? Okay, when I, or. Yes. Yes, that's him, yeah. Uh, yeah, so. Uh, bridges all those.
They provide guidance on the, like, building, building the actual charter, is that what?
Yeah, they, uh, what they said is, to make it simple, you can look at other municipalities charters and cotton model after that, what are you going to do? Like Barbara Woods. Like Barbara Woods, the one page on, and I mean, it's very simple. I mean, that, the one page, that's for the double spacing, like the big artists and everything, uh. The camels, I think it's like the amount of seats, like fifty.
It's over the top.
And pine is like thirty pages, so, uh, yeah, they said they can, what they'll do is like recommend. You know, we are similar to like pine and the camels and them, size and everything. Uh, and population wise, right, so, uh, it's a big, pretty much recommend, and it's really up to. The team on how much they'd like them to do, and so on and so. This is where council is oversight, because ultimately. You know, we be responsible for the budget, so we don't want to authorize, we just say, we're not authorizing research. It's kind of like planning committee, we're, uh, but planning. Right, so get a planner, do this and that, but we didn't authorize it, so. Things happen.
The commission, if it gets formed, would come to us with, uh, the budget, whether they're approved or denied.
Exactly, yeah, ideally they should come with the timeline of what they, like milestone, like this is what we want to do the next nine months. And this is, they want to have outside help, this is what we would want to do.
I, I know a little bit of the meeting, uh, it's something I learned. Kinda talked about, or but, once, if a commission is set. Anything council says to them doesn't matter, so they can make any decisions they want. Uh, as far as government structure, they don't answer to council, like, uh, and so they could make decisions that. You might not like, uh, to like, there's both sides of this. It was the first time I've heard talking about that.
But they need money, yes, but that's. Exactly, so you just want to go out, so, the council can say, well, you know, yeah.
If you're, if a, a charter passed by all the voters, if it was. Pretty odd version.
But they could drastically change the government's structure.
Sure. And then it's up to the voter, just the resident decides if they feel like that or not.
They're hard to be in public, right, so, uh, there's no taking.
Like sunshine act, then.
Sunshine, yeah.
Have to say, we're having meetings, this where it is.
They have better regular time.
Yeah, yeah, so sunshine act, like, uh, applies here.
Yeah.
Right, so, for a public comment time, right, so, they are discussing something regarding this direction, right? Public times for. Anyone saying that this is. If you got this direction for.
That was something someone asked me, Matt, will they have to have, I assume, like, should they have to take public comment, but they take it at every meeting or certain intervals?
Be every regular scheduled meeting or special meeting, um.
Is the time limited?
I mean, we'll have to. Well, it depends on whether they. A lot of their meetings are gonna be discussion, but research, not really voting. What if they're gonna vote on each line of the charters?
Is about making decisions.
No, I mean, it's, it's.
For the company.
The sunshine act says you're supposed to allow it, if any, before any official action is taken, at any regular or special meeting.
You have to allow it. And allow to, he has again, that it happened and, yeah. It's getting disrupted, but we're giving, you have to allow it.
Yeah, I think if we get to that point where we have a commission. Um, folks are gonna expect and want. Some sort of communication, direct communication, but, so.
I mean, and you read the other one, and they are supposed to be doing, you know, whatever presentations, public hearings, if they want to do. Surveys, they can do things like that, subject to, you know, budgeting. And again, it's probably, it is now, if they are sequestered like that, fun play, and now come out, like, this is my near the charter. Yeah, that was, that was pretty good chat, uh.
I do think we should do at least one more. Open house, I need a little break, um, but if anyone else wants to, of course, jump in, but. I think we need to do at least one more. Maybe two.
I think the key is, these are elective conditions, I think. Probably would agree, there was a lot of questions about who's gonna be on it, so it just, once the, once we know who the. The people are, maybe people will have a higher level of confidence.
Yeah, I think, right, yeah, so they've got like their resume, surrogates or whatever, and that's, that's up to each person, right? Cause they have to get themselves elected somehow.
Oh, there's seven, there's several people on the ballot, they're elected seven, they really don't have to do anything. Regardless of that, it would still be nice to know, who they are.
Yeah.
I think that the challenge, here it goes on the eighth, if I remember.
Third. Did I say the third?
Okay, maybe it is.
I heard the eight.
Okay, let's go with the one.
But again, like, the email I sent you all, like Tom and I discussed before, but how we have to figure out. What is appropriate in terms of us facilitating. People getting bios, cause I think at least four of them I know have bios and sent them to me, and I. I'd be happy to share, but again, I don't think it's appropriate for councils to be disseminating.
Yeah, I don't think the borough should be involved in that aspect.
Agreed.
Of all, right, now, once they're set up, I think they can have a landing page and people.
But I'm talking about as candidates. Uh, but that's a question that we're getting a lot, we were getting a lot of questions about that at the open house, and, uh, of course, I couldn't even answer them right then, cause I didn't know. I didn't have bios for all of them, which I still don't, but that's something we need to think about.
It's why not so few vouching for them.
That's my point, so how are we going to, are we just gonna say, sorry, if the candidates want to. Get a website somewhere, they can get one and post their bios. Um, that, but that is a question, we are going to get more and more, and that's certainly a question I would ask as a resident, how do I get information on these people, who are they?
What, what's this, what is the, um, position on people throwing public stuff out there on the table? Is that a yes or a no?
Elected official from the state, perhaps, I don't know if we have anything, uh.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Room is out there, or?
They have like. Flyers in their office.
So I guess that's here like a public forum.
Yeah, but those, those are not candidates.
Even to state reps and the state senators.
I have neither, Natalie nor her editor.
That's just kinda unique, because a lot of people have to make the decision, thinking about yes or no, and perform it. And that decision going through my head is, my, that whole decision may hinge around. Who are the seven people, when, what, what do we know about their motives and, I mean, if they're. Outstanding people, or they're doing this for all the right reason, which I, I think most of the ones I've met are. That they better get that message out, if they expect. People to say yes to perform.
Right.
So I think we should help them get their bio somehow, if, however we can help them without violating the young.
I don't know that there's an appropriate way for us to do that, but. Well, if you think about other nonpartisan positions, I mean, the school board is nonpartisan, we're certainly not helping.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, but it turns out, school board isn't talking about changing the whole. Structure on school this.
They could be. I don't know, I just, I don't know the right answer to that, or if it's just the candidacy, you're on your own.
Maybe it should be. Be on the Facebook pages, have some of their bios.
On their Facebook page.
But now create some sort of, uh, elected official.
Home rule charter, Facebook page.
Or the. The nonofficial page, but.
There's multiple of them.
Three that I counted.
And your email does say sometimes.
As I think you. I'll keep back to the county. We'll be seeing. Challenges tomorrow morning.
If there's any challenges. I, I don't know.
Very confused, we had a lot of calls, people wanting to sign a petition in favor of it or against it.
Yeah, there's a lot of confusion, for sure. Uh, and people think, even after folks have come to some dates, or all of these open houses, people still think in November, they're voting. Whatever we're coming.
Uh, yeah. Even after all these open houses.
That's why I've kept the questions, my brother, you know, what's going to be on this, on the ballot, this is so free. Yeah, we've gotten a lot.
How do communities get this?
They were just played back, back then, they were worried about other stuff, not whether or not. Whatever that is, it sounds good to me, I can, I can put my own rules, let's do that.
We tried to clarify that, I haven't looked at our, our own webpage, just clar, not clarifying names or anything, but. This is the process we're going through, and that's on Frank and Bart Burrow's official website.
So pretty aggressively posted that.
Yeah.
It does me, I mean, you could probably put it on, it's in all the slides, but maybe we could put that on the website. Just.
Maybe it needs to be up there, if it's like one of the most important, with the, like, one of the prominent questions we're getting over and over again, we need to put it on the very. Top of the. Home rule charge.
The front page.
Click this button right here and then go to the landing page for it, so, so people don't have to look for it.
So unique, because when was the last, I mean, this is something, which everybody hears to the same seats up for election. For a whole new item.
Right.
And also, these are domination papers, they're not petitions, add something different to, yeah. Yeah.
Right, and, and like you said, Tom, whether people vote for them may hinge on who the people are on the commission, so.
Yeah, we just happen to have a few of them there, I guess. And they, they started standing up in their own, so, uh, you know, me and the mayor was quiet at that, but, income, you know. Any else in the world?
I suggest something, yes, from an IP perspective. I don't know if possible, or another webpage, you can be paid all over and separate, there is an option, and we built the original city plus website, it's called Department Header. What that is, is it, it falls under our URL, it's basically a whole separate webpage to somebody else, advantages, owners being intended. I don't know if that might be a way to offer.
Is that too far afield for us paying for stuff, which we don't want to do?
I agree.
It's a good idea.
So the commission is, it actually, it comes live after the election, then I think we have to.
That's right, it's a whole different. But as candidate. There's some.
Right. We can't subsidize some taxpayers.
Uh, yeah, so, eh, anything else in the world?
I guess I'll mention it again, the speed seems to be even getting worse on our street, I've had a couple neighbors from anonymous on me. Um. I just would like to keep that on the front burner, even the mailman's one, at least forty five or fifty.
Oh, no.
Seriously.
But, me, meanwhile, the internet speeds are too slow in your neighborhood, you could switch them out. Because I even got a complaint this week about the internet speeds in the neighborhood, so.
Why am I being with my internet speed? Anyway, that's probably. Everything else is going good.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Okay, welcome to council.
You're a little bit after ten minutes. Welcome.
And also, if you don't have any comments today, it's okay.
Comments about today's meeting, or?
You don't have to, if you want to, if there's something you want to share.
You can do whatever you want, you can just say, you can take fifteen minutes if you want.
Well, I don't know, I thought this was very interesting, it was fun to listen, it was, I mean, it definitely took us, I guess, to catch up and. Figure out what they were talking about, but it was very. For the new one, I thought about.
Why more do you do this?
That's traditional.
Yeah, I think that's it, I, I really.
What I'm gonna say. Uh, oh, November fifteenth, we have our, uh. Veterans appreciation. Uh, but, um, in Duberis, the activity center. It's our third one, I believe, I. I put, uh, Don and I worked, uh, a lot with this together, along with other, other people, but, um. We've always seemed to have a problem when we get there, and we get our veterans there, and we get their guests there, and we have. Seventy five people there that all of a sudden. PA system is not doing what it needs to do, we've talked about this before. And, um, it's just embarrassing. You know, uh. We need to do something up there. Not only for this event, but for other events that we have, or we at least have some sort of a system where. Luckily, luckily, last year, uh, we had a group there, that, that, uh, was, that was doing. National anthem and those kind of things, they had their system there, and we were able to use that, so our system, our, our system constantly just failed. All the time. We've talked about this before, and it seems like we talked about it, and nothing ever gets fixed, and I don't believe there's anything different now other than what we. It was bad at the Christmas. Yes, I mean, yes, right, yes, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't. Well, it was, it was barely bad last Christmas.
No, it was the worst, it's everything, um, I, I think you need temperation lotion, is what I think, I think they have two, three hundred dollars in Sam.
Yeah, it's a whole thing, and it's really loud, and it's really.
And I think until we, till we have a. A budget in fall. Um, I think that we should authorize that, I, I do. Uh, is that what they had last year, the, the group that was forming something along?
Yeah, they, they just had their own, whatever it was. What it was, but.
Yeah, I mean, I see them there every month, and I think, well, this would.
I tell you, you're right, the Christmas, and then the Christmas one. So, I don't know, I'm just putting it out there, because it's pretty nice if we could do this year without having that problem.
Should try their approach. On the ship, basically speaker and like the.
Uh, it's two, three.
Yeah, I think it's even wired, there's a good.
We, we don't have one.
No, we have our own.
Those aren't purpose to do, yeah.
I have one you can borrow, sure. I'm telling Tom, they don't have a.
Well, we do, but we, we, we do have a, we, it seems like we do have some sort of a system there, it just doesn't work. Luckily, it's cool.
Let's try the temporary solution.
Yeah, yeah.
It sounds like, I don't know, so, do you know much about baby?
I, I know it's there, uh, it's, it's stuff that we never had in the near future, just that that we bought from, from schools or shelves. It's never been designed for the rest. Marilla and Goose things, and say, what do we need to do to make this work?
And they say baby receiver, and those speakers, I believe it's what, I've been there for wireless speakers, so, I don't think they're wired at all, so the speakers themselves are.
Bring your own chairs.
So, depending on where you are in a room, you need to determine how knowledgeable it is based on how far you are with two speakers. How about if you're right between two speakers evenly, you hear the sound normally. You're ten feet from this one, you'll get it immediately here, and you know, separate later, this year, it goes on hard. I would suggest we get somebody to look at it long term, I'm not for the recommendation, I'm not saying we're gonna buy from them. I would suggest, we should first take a look at it. Part four would make a big investment, but I think you're on the right track, you know, affordable system, but you could use that out, people anywhere, right, anytime.
Andy, how would that, um. If we get just a little. You've got the place filled with people. How is it going to? Project.
The, the problem with. A single speaker portable system, what you're talking about.
Yes.
Is, when you have it right next to you, when you're talking into it. The person on the other side of the room, if there's anybody talking between them and the speaker. People behind them aren't gonna hear.
I know.
That's why you, you need, it's referred to, we have out here a sort of distributed system. There's several speakers going back to the room, multiple routes. So that even if someone in front of you is talking, there's another speaker behind you. And that's. What they tried to do, or not, not the one they did over there, they had the budget and the people did it. Uh, but it's not designed to work, I mean, distributed system, it's basically for independent PA systems setting the other work. Setting the other order, not streaming the sound across them.
There's still consumer ones that you can tether a couple speakers together.
Yeah, Zach found one for two hundred bucks, two speakers, so.
They're, they're real nice PA speakers.
It's, it's gonna be better than what, than what we had, for sure.
Use it as a stock gap measure, because you're not spending the fortunes.
Right, you know, it's, it's, it's right there.
Yeah.
I would put thousands into it, but I'd be a professional advice, I'll speak to them.
But I think we have thousands to put into it, you know, anyway.
I mean, we tried this, it's all right, yeah, okay, what's happened? You can go test it out.
Do it, do a test drive.
Yeah.
See how it works, have a disco night, something, you know. Open bike.
That is.
You put it, you put a number on.
There are a number of guys, state.
Oh.
Stay under you.
I, I have a two hundred watt, figure my own, I use, so, every different thing that I can bring up, if you want, I can get something for you, and I have.
Thanks.
Under five, something, so.
Anyways, it's, uh, November fifteenth, and let's see if we can to make this thing work this year, without having all this embarrassment.
It works, yeah. All right, we'll handle it.
Well.
Um, the mayor and I have been talking about senior luncheon, breakfast, senior event, I think we're gonna have one in October. We did, what did we say, either the seventh or the fourteenth, we need to go back and, circle back and confirm with Zach for the blueberry activity center, we have, uh. Entertainment lined up, right, for a very.
Um, we're working on it, but we, we will do it today, it might, it might be Abraham Lincoln giving a speech, who knows? Uh, but we'll, that's, that's, that's out there, so we're working on it, we, we, we have a good contact tonight, that.
Yes, and we, well, the mayor and I spoke to, uh, the owner, the manager, at, at DJ, oh, general manager of DJ Barbecue. They have the menu for us, and are willing to give us a deal, um, for what was about?
Eightty plus, eightty plus.
Eight dollars a person.
It's already fifty, something like that, and, and I'm sorry, I think you hit.
Oh, no, go ahead, this is your deal, you go ahead.
And, uh, he's gonna somehow arrange to get it there, and we're gonna have to figure out how to get it served.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we can make that happen, and actually, I thought some people will help us with that.
Okay.
It's a matter of working together on it, and making it happen, and, yeah, and, and, yeah, Aaron, the GM up at the, uh, at the. DJ's, um, gonna make it, get, do something for it, probably provide eight bucks a serving, then it'll be like. Three different things you can choose from, it'll, it'll be, it'll be adequate, and he actually said after we talked, that, that, uh, he was trying to, or, it is, uh, regular pace. I can give a section, say it's different months.
Okay, that's great.
Anyway, we're, we're on a good path to make this work, but we have to now to set the date, then once we set the date, then I'll get the.
Okay.
What do you think?
Cool.
Cool.
Yeah, very good, very good.
That's all I have.
All right, right.
A resident on Cole Road, uh, same problem with not having choice between Comcast and another service provider. I looked in Zach, Zach is going to get them a response, but essentially, the problem is, what we heard from Tom, which is in some areas, there's no competition with these utility companies. And the problem is the borough doesn't really have any ability to make utility companies compete or dive in and help, so this close, they're stuck with Comcast, and. As they wrote in their email, after the honeymoon period is over, Comcast becomes extremely expensive, it doesn't provide much in the way of service at all. So they're frustrated, and then reaching out to the, to council on that.
So they look, they're looking for internet, it's internet issue.
Yeah, so. And I think they look five rock to the cable, like everybody else, and.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's it.
All right. Okay, um. Okay, should we go to Zach's session, and?
Hey, we're going to Zach's session, I'm setting the video up.